Waiting on you guys, sorry, sorry. Did you find a garbage can? I call to order the Asuigo Community Unit School District 308 Board of Education meeting. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mrs. Doyle?
Here.
Mrs. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Lightfoot? Ms. Morgan?
Here.
Mrs. Moyer?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under thy eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. I don't know what to do. It wasn't that, that's good. Good evening, I would like to welcome everyone who is personally in attendance at tonight's school board meeting. As was stated on the board agenda, this meeting is open to the public in accordance with Phase Four Guidance issued by the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Illinois State Board of Education. We are all social distancing per the guidance and all individuals are required to wear a face covering at all times while in the school building. We will be accommodating those who can't wear a mask by live streaming this meeting at www.sd308.org. Also, if anyone would like to make a public comment to the board but can't do so in person because of the mask requirement, you may always submit a comment in writing ahead of the meeting and your comment will be read during the public comment section of the meeting. The directions to submit a written public comment are listed at the top of the meeting agenda. We certainly recognize that wearing a face mask for long periods of time is inconvenient and sometimes uncomfortable. However, it does provide the best known protection against giving the virus to another person and it will be required of all individuals during this meeting. If anyone needs a break from wearing a mask during the meeting, please feel free to go outside for a break and take your mask off as you continue to remain six feet apart from others. Just put your mask on before re-entering the building. Please understand that we will be monitoring the building and will be asking anyone without a mask to put one on or to leave the building. We appreciate everyone's understanding and willingness to abide by these expectations for our collective safety and health. Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the public for attending tonight's meeting. We value the feedback we receive from our residents and encourage everyone to take an active interest in their public school system. Residents interested in speaking to the board this evening are asked to have completed a comment card or submitted your comment by email to the Secretary to the Board. When the Secretary calls your name, I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name for the public record, and provide your feedback. Please note that comments are limited to three minutes per person and that no discussion of personnel matters, including names or specific job titles, or responses to questions are permitted. The Board does not participate in discussion during public comment. Follow-up to your questions or concerns will be addressed by administration through the contact information provided on the comment card or email. To ensure that all topics get addressed, we will hear three comments per topic this evening. The first three emails sent are going to be read and then all remaining emails will be distributed to the board members and then added to the minutes.
Josh Gerber?
Members of the Board, on Monday, July 13, 2020, a very well thought-out plan was presented to the Board and community. It had a choice given to parents of a six-hour day for elementary students or full-time remote learning. I appreciate the district providing options to parents, but on July 15, 2020, the plan that was sent out was different. The school day was shortened to four hours with some remote learning. In addition to this reduction in school day class time, we were given the option of having after-school care at each school throughout the Park District Kids Connection Program. I submitted a question to the question portal requesting an explanation on why the day was shortened and how shortening the day keeps our children safe, when more than will need after-school care than when the day was six hours. This would drive further cross-contamination between children from different classrooms. The explanation I was given from the portal by Tina Moore is quoted, "There was tremendous pushback from the teachers' union and the community about elementary students wearing their masks for that long a time." This explanation is not sufficient or acceptable. If parents have concerns over mask-wearing, they should choose to keep their children home for remote learning, not to penalize parents and children that want to go to full-time school. Children will be required to wear masks at Kids Connection, so this is not an issue for most families. If children refuse to wear masks, parents should be notified immediately to resolve the issue. Pandering to small groups of people makes the plan more complicated and harder to manage for all parties involved. I believe the original plan was adequate to address all families' concerns instead of creating more complexity for working families. If there is a teacher shortage for full-day learning, please be honest with the community on this topic. If teachers are refusing to work out of fear of the virus, the community deserves to know about this issue. Teachers and all school employees are essential workers. Schools are essential services. The sooner we realize this, the better off the community will be. Thank you for your time.
Jeff Hay?
I would like to thank the school board and administration for developing a comprehensive back-to-school plan amidst an ever-changing health environment. Although many of us strongly agree or disagree with various components of the plan, I do believe it was developed with the best of intentions. While many pieces of the current plan may be sources of debate and contention amongst our school district community, I believe that we all remain united behind one common goal: keeping our children, families, and staff members safe. History will not judge our plan based on who had the best online or in-person learning platform. Rather, success will be based on one simple question: did the Board and administration do everything in their power to keep us all safe? Herein lies a true opportunity and obligation to improve our plan. The Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health have issued guidelines on the minimum requirements needed to reopen our schools. The District 308 Plan meets these minimums. The real question to ponder is whether doing the minimum is good enough. I would contend that we ought to be striving for best-in-class when it comes to the safety of our community. There are three areas in particular where we must demand more from our current plan. One, social distancing in classrooms. Minimum requirements call for the plan to observe social distancing as much as possible. Best-in-class, per the Illinois Department of Education Guidelines, calls for six feet of separation when exposure is longer than fifteen minutes, especially for children or staff who are at risk or who have families that may be at risk. We meet the minimums. Two, group environments, i.e. lunch. Mask use will be difficult in this environment. Minimum requirements mandate no more than fifty people in any gathering without any specific social distancing requirements. Best-in-class would be six feet of separation with the use of plexiglass table dividers to compensate for not being able to wear masks while eating lunch. We meet the minimums. Symptom screening. Minimum requirements call for the self-certification of a child or staff member's health. Best-in-class is daily temperature scans and health survey requirements to enter the building. We meet the minimums. As a food industry executive who has spent the past four months developing and executing plans to keep ten thousand-plus essential workers safe, I can assure you that there is a massive difference in between doing the minimum and striving for best-in-class. While even the best of plans have resulted in a one-to-two percent infection rate, doing the bare minimum is what landed many food companies in the headlines with infection rates of over thirty percent. Our community deserves better than checking the minimum boxes and would ask the Board and administration to consider the differences which I outlined. No plan will be perfect when it comes to the education of our children, but we owe it to our children and staff to create the safest environment possible.
Brenda Faris?
This is our third email public comment regarding school reopening plans, so the rest will be submitted to board members tomorrow and then added to the minutes. Dear Board Members and Administrators, My name is Brenda Faris. I am a parent and a teacher in the district. I teach second grade dual-language at Boulder Hill. My sons will be entering sixth and fifth grade at Trauber and Hunt Club respectively. First and foremost, I want you to know that I truly appreciate all you have done and continue to do for our community. I hope you and your loved ones are well and enjoying good health. As everyone else in the community, I am concerned about the health and safety of our students and staff. I don't think it is in anybody's best interest to be back at school with full classroom loads, even if it is for shorter periods of time. To tell the truth, I do not believe for a second that we should be back to school physically at all. At least not now. Our classrooms are small and there's no room for social distance. Some buildings have poor ventilation and there are some classrooms without functioning windows and/or a window. Our support staff teaches from closets or sometimes have no choice but to teach in a hall. The thought of seven hundred people in an average-sized elementary building gives many of us mixed feelings. Why is it that we aren't allowed to gather in groups with more than fifty people present, but we can open a building with seven hundred children and adults? Yes, students will be in their classrooms, but halls and bathrooms will continue to be shared. Eventually, we will all be breathing the same air. How is this safe for anybody? Under the current proposals, I am particularly worried about the remote plans for junior high and dual-language students at the elementary level. Dual-language parents have been told that the program can't be guaranteed to run remotely. I find this unacceptable. Dual-language is a program and not a one-class elective. It should be offered remotely, just like a monolingual program. No ifs, ands, or buts. As an educator, I know my language-learning students need ESL bilingual supports and strategies to be able to successfully access content. It will be detrimental to their academic growth and language acquisition to be thrown into a monolingual remote cluster without proper accommodations and supports. I urge the Board to look into this matter and make sure dual-language elementary parents have the option to choose remote learning for their students with the guarantee that the program will run remotely regardless of schools opening physically or not. As far as junior high is concerned, I have to say I am less than pleased that remote learners will be receiving instruction from a platform instead of SD308 teachers. We have diverse learners and this delivery model is not ideal for all students. In addition, I wonder how honor students will be supported. We know these courses are demanding and that students need teacher support to reach their full potential and succeed. Also, I believe it is unfair that junior high remote learners cannot participate in electives. These kids look forward to these classes just like elementary students look forward to their special classes. Band and choir are an important piece of their experiences as middle schoolers. That's three minutes of time. There's a few more sentences that I'm gonna finish reading so the whole email can be read. Last but not least, parents and teachers alike are being rushed to make decisions with little to no information and forced to commit to things we aren't certain about without the ability to change our minds if something were to happen and change the way we go back to school. For example, if I chose remote learning for my sons and we were able to go fully remote before August 20th, can my sixth grader opt out of edgenuity and be placed in a roster to learn from an SD308 teacher? Can my son entering fifth grade dual-language be placed back into what would've been his classroom cluster if we were to choose remote learning for him tomorrow and then we end up going back to school fully remote? I wholeheartedly believe that parents and teachers alike need more time to make decisions, especially since we are just about to hear the remote learning plans the district has been working on. As stakeholders, we deserve time to process all the information to make informed decisions for our students and families. I ask that the deadline to submit our decisions about how our children and staff will be back to school be extended by at least a week. For your time and consideration, I thank you in advance. Let me just one second to pull this right back up. Item 5.1 Superintendent's Report.
Before I begin this evening, I just wanted to ask if any member of the Board had any comments that they would like to make before we move forward with this evening's agenda?
I do. I just wanna let the community know that I have researched everything that I could getting ready for this meeting. I've read the research that people wrote about in their letters, hoping that I could get more insights from people in the community and I understand that people are concerned about the safety, the social-emotional, that kids are looking forward to school. But I wanna stress, we are not going back to normal. That is not what's going to happen with in-person learning. It is not going to be normal. My understanding of what I'm hearing from the letters, from the comments, from people I talk to in the community is that people are concerned about masks and we are not sure that the community is ready to comply with the request and the demand that students wear masks. We are also not sure that the class sizes are gonna fit inside the classrooms in some of these models, even the hybrid model. We're not sure that that amount of kids can fit into the classroom and have appropriate distance to keep them safe. And there's a huge concern too about the adults involved, the teachers, the custodians, the secretaries, the teaching assistants. There are no models that have been offered by any district that I have researched that can offer authentic safety. If we sit here as a board and we think that we are offering true safety to children or adults, we are delusional because it is pretend to think that six feet is enough. It is pretend to think that germs are not gonna get out and make people sick. That is a pretend assumption. So, I think as a board, we need to think about some things that the community is saying and we need to take them seriously. There is a liability involved with sending people into an environment and then in a week, somebody gets sick and you have to quarantine people and you have to make sure that person has a separate place to go and the nurse has to do something with that person and the custodian has to clean the bathrooms for seven hundred people in one wing. There's a lot of things that when you put this situation together, it's not gonna be normal. It's not gonna be like school used to be at all. And it's not gonna have continuity because it's gonna be interrupted every single time somebody shows symptoms that could be COVID. A cough, a runny nose, a fever. And in my experience in thirty years of education, that is extremely common. Those are extremely common things. So if you think that we're gonna have any kind of continuity of learning or social-emotional peace and quiet, that's not gonna happen. The cost is enormous. To this district, to get the nurses, the custodians, the secretaries, the extra help you would need for all this stuff is gonna be phenomenally expensive if we put kids back in school. It's gonna cost a lot of money. And finally, I just wanna say, the environment of secretaries or whoever it is standing out there scanning every kid and making sure they're self-reporting on their health, trying to take attendance, trying to get to discipline because somebody pulled down their mask and we're not sure why they did. Maybe it was because they wanted to sneeze or they felt like there was something icky in their mask. There's a million different reasons why masks are gonna be hard. So, I plan to vote absolutely for online learning. And I just said why. I don't think it's practical, it's not feasible, and the community is telling us that there are so many questions that we cannot answer satisfactorily. And if we can't answer the questions that they have about how it's gonna be, and I mean we cannot, like no one can, then it is irresponsible to send kids back to school and put them in that environment and it is criminal to put teachers and custodians and secretaries and all those people that are on our staff back in the schools.
Thank you, anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to, also to the community, there was a lot of frustration, anger, anxiety over the course of the events last week after the school board meeting and then when there was a change to the informed plan on Monday and then the announcement of a special board meeting being called. A lot of concern, a lot of what-ifs, uncertainty throughout the parents and everyone involved. And I just wanna say that this is a, we as a board are trying to, on our own and collectively, obtain and research all the information that we can. Just as in the rest of society, things are changing almost daily. And as they do, and as a board, as a governing body, we can't simply have a phone call with each other and say, okay, I agree, we're going to zig when we were going to zag. We need to come together, we need to talk about it, some issues need to be voted on. And quite realistically, if something changes tomorrow and Mrs. Doyle has to call another board meeting, we're going to come back together. It's what we need to do, it's what we need to do to stay informed and to be able to inform the public. So, I just wanted to say thanks for your patience, I understand the concern, but we're doing this for the families and for the students that we're working with. And thanks for everyone coming together tonight so we can work our way through this once more.
I would just like to say that I too have read every email and all the links that are included with all of those emails and most of them are very long and I appreciate that our public is comfortable to share their opinions and ideas with us, with the district and board members and I hope that they know that even if they're not getting a personalized response from every single person that we are... Well, I am reading them obviously, you know, as much as possible, we're all also working. But I feel like the overwhelming response that I have been reading is not the opposite of Tony because there's a lot of people who are very concerned about safety and I completely understand that. But I think there's an equal number of parents who are saying, "You're giving us a choice, please continue to give us a choice." And maybe they're not super excited about their choices and maybe they do still have a lot of questions about those choices and questions that they would like answered and hopefully some of those will happen tonight with this presentation. I don't think it's realistic that, we're certainly not gonna please all the people. My people are gonna be angry no matter what we do. Because everybody has different opinions and ideas and our job as a board is to take all the information in and to listen to our unions and to listen to our administrators and make the best decision that we can. And I think that it would be irresponsible of us to ignore the fact that my under-reading of last Monday's numbers where the eighty percent of parents wanted at least some sort of in-person learning for their children, that they're concerned. I think most people are aware, it's not gonna be normal. I've been out in public and I see people wearing masks and it's not a problem. Little kids are wearing them, you buy them anywhere you go. I don't see that that, sure, there will be some problems, but overall, I think most people understand that that's what you gotta do. You do what you gotta do. And I think it would be irresponsible not to offer options for our parents if they don't feel safe, there is a remote option, if they do... Not that everyone feels safe all the time, nobody feels a hundred percent safe right now, but if they feel that in-person learning is most important, I feel like we need, have a responsibility to offer that if possible.
I agree. I disagree a lot with the statement that it's criminal to put kids in buildings. I think we are essential. And I think that calling it criminal is to call doctors and daycare workers and grocery store workers. Like, it depends on your outlook and people do have a choice and they deserve that choice. Everybody's anxious, I teach, I know you teach, but I also know that me being in that classroom with that kid and building that relationship, even if it's only for two weeks, even if it's for two months, is the most important thing. So I one-hundred percent disagree that we should start school online. I think, I don't agree with that at all. I think you can't predict what kids are gonna do with masks. I think it would be irresponsible of us to sit up here and say, well, these kids aren't gonna wear these masks. Well, if they don't wear the masks, then they won't be in the building. We should make that clear. And we should also make clear that grades count. And I think we'll have a much different experience with in-person and online this time. But I think, I don't, I don't agree with the grandstanding in calling it criminal. I think we're a whole board of people who represent this entire community.
I, you know, I, it's, this is a hard spot for everybody and I, I'm, I don't really have a whole lot more to say. I'm ready for our presentation whenever we're ready to get there.
Alright, any other board comments?
Yes, I'd like to read from Mr. Lightfoot that he's sorry he can't join in-person this evening as he had previously planned traveling with family out of state. Thanks to everyone who's reached out to him and his fellow board members and that he is watching and listening online. And for me, I'd just like to again thank everybody from the staff and from the community that have reached out. It has been an overwhelming response. And I know as many board members as have hours in the day have spent reading all of that communication and doing the research and looking at all of these things. This is in the midst of several changes and proposed changes and rumored changes about complete transformations of how reopening will be allowed to look. And again, it's a, it's continued unclear expectations from the Department of Public Health as to our quarantine guidelines and what that will look like. I am very concerned that it's not feasible to open because we will be going back in and out of remote learning so much that I, personally, I think that it's more responsible to create a one-hundred percent remote learning plan. However, I also know that the other side of that coin is that there are, for a lot of kids, where school is essential, not just for the education, but it's also essential for the community's support. And as we've seen over the summer and over the spring, our community has come together in an amazing way to make sure kids stay fed as much as we know and that kids stay engaged in learning as much as we know that they have needs. So I know that every single person in our administration is working the job of two or three people. We've cut the staff and administration down to the bone over the last several years of budget cuts. And this is when that starts to show, but even so, the administrators, and they're actually mostly all sitting right here, they have been working non-stop for our kids. And you can't tell me that that's for a paycheck or that we pay them enough to do this because we don't. They are taking chances and risks that they are doing the wrong thing because simply the instructions today are different than the instructions will be tomorrow. So I want to thank all of our administrators that are here sincerely because this is truly a first for every single person. We have seen in other districts in our area that even in the last few days, plans, boards, everything have changed one-hundred-and-eighty degrees, just like that. So the most I can ask for from our community is patience and an understanding that this is not even possible to consider in a realm of a normal evaluation of how a district is doing. I've seen districts with a lot of money struggling and I've seen districts without a lot of money struggling. This is a nationwide struggle to reopen schools. And I don't think that anybody in this room could do more or give more to the students in our community if they were paid more or if there were more of them. But hopefully, we can hear more about the plans that they have been working on that we simply haven't had time yet to hear. So I know that we will continue if we need to make changes to the guidelines as we know more information. The changes may still happen. I'd again ask for patience. And I'd ask for everyone to understand that, that the administrators that are working on this problem really do want everyone safe and are really not trying to just make quick decisions. I don't think I've seen a decision that was made just, ah, I don't know, just do something. Everything is being very carefully considered. There just simply isn't enough hours, there are not enough hours in the day to make sure that every single person in our community is aware of all the decisions because frankly, there's just too many. So thank you guys again, I really appreciate it. I know that this is not going to be something that is done now or done next week or done on August 19th, that this is going to be a continually changing process throughout the whole year, whether we're in school one day, two days, or half of us are in school and half are remote. We are still one school district, we are still one community. And our children will still receive an education- And our children will still receive an education that will help them grow into adults that can take care of us when we're old, God willing, and also be able to provide in a way that we as a generation will never understand because they have had this experience. And since you are the ones providing that to them, I, I thank you all for your creativity and your hard work.
Thank you very much, appreciate all the board members' comments. Item five point two is the superintendent's report. So good evening, board, and good evening to everyone that's here and watching at home remotely. You know, it's been said that we're living in unprecedented times. And educationally, we've never had to face the challenges that we currently are navigating. I'd like to thank the board and the community for all the ideas, questions and input that you've sent over, sent to us over the weekend. It truly is important and your, your input is valued. This, the fact of the matter is, this is a time of uncertainty for all of us. It's a time of change and unknowns and the work we've done to this point has been put together to provide the best learning opportunities and the safest environment for our kids, our staff and our community. In March, we were forced to go to remote learning and we had little time to react. And we were under many restrictions of what we could and couldn't do during that time. Those restrictions are no longer in place and tonight we're here to present Remote Learning two point oh. We feel that it's important to share what a one hundred percent remote learning option would potentially look like for two reasons. Number one, if we were to make the decision to go to that model. Or number two, if we were forced to go to that model in the, in the, in the future. As you will see in this evening's presentation, the one hundred percent two point oh looks very different than what we experienced in March. The plan you'll see tonight reflects the regular school day to the best of our ability, just done remotely. We have multiple members of the district administrative team that are here this evening to present what this plan looks like and to answer the questions that the Board of Education has. How we move forward for next year and the decisions that are made are probably the most important decisions that we can make for the upcoming school year. And so with that, shall we begin? And let's get started with the presentation, how's that sound?
I think that's a grand plan.
Excellent.
For right now, unless the requirements change.
Yes. We have two presentations for this evening. The first is to present what one hundred percent learning two point oh would look like. So before we start the presentation, I'd like to ask the board to hold your questions until the end of the presentation because you'll have many questions. And, but many of those questions that you'll have will be answered during the presentation as we go through it. So I'd ask you to write those questions down alongside the, with the number of the slide that those questions pertain to. You've all got a written copy of the plan, so hopefully that makes it a little more easy. So this way, when we go back to answer the questions, we can refer back to the slide that the questions are, appropriate slide. Also tonight, we have multiple members of the administrative team presenting this evening. So I'm going to ask them to state their name prior to each time that they present so that the people watching from home will know who is presenting. So slide one, Remote Learning two point oh. It's important to note that this plan does not replace the current learning options. This plan is for information only this evening. The plan is also being built. So if it becomes necessary for our district to move entirely into remote learning for all students and the comprehensive plan is ready to be implemented. Now slide two, tonight's, tonight's plan, the presentation highlights the structure and schedule for one hundred percent Remote Learning two point oh. So in the next slide, as I stated earlier, one hundred percent learning two point oh looks very different than what remote learning looked like in the spring of twenty twenty. And some of those main four, some of those main differences are those, the four bullets that are on the screen there. Daily attendance will be taken, that's different than what it was in the spring. Students will participate daily in learning activities, assignments and assessments. We have increased live sessions with our School District three oh eight staff. And grades will be assigned and will impact the overall grade just like grades do in our traditional person-to-person educational setting. So at this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Hildebrand, the Executive Director of Special Education. She will now begin with what this looks like for early childhood.
Good evening. So for early childhood, for a remote-for-all format, we are hoping to replicate as closely as possible what students would receive if they were onsite. This looks markedly different than what was provided during our spring remote learning session. As there'll be an increased number of live teacher-taught sessions. We also recognize that their teacher assistants within those classrooms have an important role to play. And so there'll be an opportunity for teaching assistants to provide live sessions to students as well. During these sessions, they'll provide extension and practice opportunities for the skills that are taught by the teacher in the large and small group sessions. Each session will be about fifteen minutes in duration and content will reflect what would have been taught in an in-person or onsite format. So this is an example of a early childhood schedule that students would follow. Every morning, and just to mention that we've broken out the AM and PM sessions as we have two sessions, morning and afternoon for early childhood, both for the blended classrooms, which is up to about eighteen students, and then also for self-contained or cross-categorical classrooms, which have about eight students. All students within those classrooms have IEPs or individual education plans. But the schedule would be followed for both groups of students. So every morning and afternoon, the session would begin with live social-emotional learning sessions where there'd be the opportunity to focus on the social-emotional learning skills. That would then be followed by a live small group sessions, either with a teacher or the teaching assistant. You can see in the schedule that there are opportunities for break and snack. And as I mentioned previously, each of these sessions would be in fifteen, about fifteen minutes in duration. For blended classrooms, we're looking at about six students per small group session. And for self-contained or cross-categorical classrooms, we're looking up to about, looking at about three students per session. At the end of the morning and afternoon, there'll be a pre-recorded whole group session that will be recorded by the teacher, followed by choice, choice board activities that students and their parents can complete at their convenience.
Good evening, I'm Lindsay Allen, Director of Elementary Education. For elementary, what we would be looking at is students participating in four days of virtual live instruction. And we're calling those sessions Go Live Sessions and one day of Google Classroom Learning. In the morning, we would have students participating in live sessions for the pledge, morning meeting, social-emotional learning, English, English Language Arts and Social Studies, math, science and specials. And then these would all be followed up with video sessions also for English Language Arts and Social Studies, math and specials. In the afternoon, after lunch, students would be participating in live small group sessions that are focused on reteaching and support for specific skills to meet the individual needs of the students. Here's an example of the kindergarten, first grade schedule. For elementary, we do have three different schedules. And as we go through them, I'll explain the reasoning for those three schedules. But as I'm walking you through this, I am going to be referencing kindergarten and first grade. So the first hour of the day, teachers would have time for staff collaboration time. During this time, they'll be working on creating videos and expectations along with their grade levels. They'll collaborate on grade level standards and curriculum and discuss specific student needs. On Wednesday, during that Google Classroom Learning time, they'll use that time for staff meetings. When the day starts live, it'll start right away at nine o'clock for students. And it'll be a check-in and this will be live for social-emotional learning, a morning message. The teacher will preview the day for the students. Students will participate in the Pledge of Allegiance to try to keep the day as normal as possible. Second step, lessons in social-emotional learning will happen during this time. And students will have an opportunity to ask teachers any specific questions they might have for that day. For kinder, or for kindergarten and first grade, they would then move into a live math instruction. Within this instruction, the teacher will introduce the lesson objectives and the standards of focus and begin teaching the students. That will be followed up by a video session of math instruction where it's recorded by the teacher. And it continues the instruction in that video form. Students can watch that, be able to stop it, rewind it, watch it again, and they'll have time for independent work time. After that, there will be a, a time for break and snack. We know our little ones need to be able to get up and move around as well as have time to eat snack. And then they would move into fifteen minutes of live English Language Arts and Social Studies instruction. Those will be embedded, our social studies curriculum is tied very closely to our English Language Arts curriculum. So it's very easy to tie those two together. So the same thing with the live instruction followed by a video. Again, after that, we want to make sure that there is a break for our students before moving into live science. Live science will be by the teacher and they'll be using our next generation standards, using video demonstrations. And our Amplify Science curriculum does have wonderful classroom slides in the form of a PowerPoint that can be used and it has videos embedded in that. But even though they would be using that, the teacher would be speaking live. They will also have, and, and this is what you will see different, there will be a, a time for specials to take place through a video. So on Monday, it would be physical education, Tuesday is art, Thursday is music and Friday is library. They would be able to watch that video, that way they are getting that instruction at home. Of course, after that, we do want to make sure that they have time for lunch. So there's an hour lunch time put in there. And when they come back, this will be the time where there's small group instruction. During this time, it's an hour, teachers will be available for hour, for an hour. And what we're looking at is two fifteen-minute sessions of whole class instruction to reteach or to enrich and meet the needs of the students. We'd also be looking at two fifteen-minute sessions that are assigned to specific groups of students. So that's small group work. This can be the time where reading specialists are working with us, students. Those students that need MTSS interventions, English language learners, gifted education for English Language Arts and special education services. That can all be embedded in there. Teacher assistants will help during that time and so will our specials teachers. So our, our music, PE and library teachers. After that, there is student support time. So at this time, teachers could continue to work with small groups of students. But this is also a time where students will need to, to create, or they will need to participate in a checkout. And that's through Google Classroom, it could be through an exit slip or a question of the day. But they will have that hour to check out and get extra help.
Dr. Allen, before you move on, Teresa, could you remind the folks at home how they can log on to see this presentation? We're doing our best to make sure that it's viewable, live as we go through it. But they, the people at home can also view it because it has been uploaded.
So if you want to view the presentation, I have added a link directly to the page underneath the livestream page on our website, or you can go to the Board of Education tab under Board Docs. And you can select the meetings and then the date for today. You'll see the agendas, you can click on the agenda and all of the presentations will be linked within the agenda items. But again, there's a, a link directly to that right underneath the livestream on our page.
Thank you, Teresa.
So continuing with the schedule, Wednesday would be a Google Classroom Learning Activity Day with Go Live specials. So what does that mean? On this day, staff will be participating in special education IEP meetings if they have parent meetings that they need to conduct, or they will continue to collaborate with each other. But the students will participate in half-hour live sessions by grade level with their specials teacher. So on Wednesdays, they will have a half an hour live of art, music, physical education and library. So again, throughout the week, they'll have a fifteen-minute video session that they'll be able to watch. But then on Wednesdays, they'll be able to go live with their specials teachers. And I know that was something really big for our specials teachers, they wanted that face-to-face time. Also, our specials teachers throughout the week, during the, the morning times where we're having that check-in, the social-emotional learning, the pledge, specials teachers will be part of that too. So we want to make sure that they're included and they're paired up with classrooms to be able to do that. So second through fourth grade schedule follows the same type of format. There is more instructional time in English Language Arts and Social Studies and Math. And the reason for that, we do know for our kindergartners and first graders, they have a shorter attention span when it comes to watching live instruction videos. So their time is shortened, but starting in second grade, we wanted to increase that. And then the fifth grade schedule is exactly the same as the second through fourth grade schedules. However, we do have students who receive gifted education services and math instruction. And we have gifted education teachers who teach the fourth and the fifth grade. So what we needed to do was make sure that we flip-flopped the math and the, and the English Language Arts sections. That way they would have that live time with their gifted education teacher.
For junior high, I'm Shannon Luters, Director of Junior High Education. So students at junior high will also participate in four days of virtual live instruction with the one day of Google Classroom Learning. I am going to share two options with you this evening and I'll explain each of those and why we have to have two options in the next few slides. This first slide is a nine-period day with thirty-five-minute class periods. This mimics the typical junior high school day, so it has all nine periods. Students attend live sessions with their, with their teachers four days a week and they follow their classroom schedule. Couple of things to note, they do have two periods of Language Arts in this schedule and they also have PE and/or health in this schedule. On Wednesday, students will work on assignments in their Google Classroom that teachers will upload. There will also be time for social-emotional activities and for teachers to collaborate. Built-in student support time, you'll note, is at the end of every day when there is a Go Live sessions and teachers would be online during that time to help students who needed extra support. The caveat for this schedule is that if we are going to build this, because it is the schedule that we have now, that we would need to commit to it for an entire semester. Because in order to switch back and forth between this and the shortened six-period choice would take an absolute rebuilding of our master schedule. And so it would, we would need to do that over winter break. So we would need to commit to a nine-period remote for an entire semester. So the next slide is a junior high schedule built based on the six-period day that is our current in-person choice. This is forty minutes per day, live sessions. But they would only have one period of the English Language Arts and they would have physical education and, and health remotely. As you see, though, we have built in time to keep kids on track to, and it would be suggested that they do their remote PE or health activities first thing in the morning from eight to eight forty. And then their supplemental English Language Arts activities at the end of the day from two thirty to three. We also still have the student support time built in, so the teachers would be live. Students in a typical schedule, and the reason that we have the six is they have English Language Arts for a period, math for a period, science for a period, social studies for a period, and then they have two elective slots in their schedule. In those elective slots, it could be a study hall, it could be an elective class, or it could be an intervention course that is built in. The difference between this and the nine-period is this schedule gives us the flexibility to move back and forth from remote to in-person learning with that shortened school day that we have been talking about.
Good evening, my name is Heather Kincaid. I'm the Executive Director of Accountability in High School. What we're going to talk about is the high school proposed schedule for Remote Learning two point oh and the schedule for GOAL. So similar to junior high, the schedule that we built is four days of in-person, excuse me, live sessions and one day of Google Classroom. The structure of the day is an eight-period day aligned to what we experience when we are in person. The class periods are forty minutes long with a five-minute break in between. We also have built in a support period at the end of the day for students who need additional help, one-on-one, small group, where they could reach out to the teacher, the teacher could reach out to them, they could have time with the counselor. So here, their schedule would be as is, is if they're in person and they would be taking the classes that they are currently signed up for. The block of forty minutes gives teachers the flexibility to do different activities within that period and interact four days a week in a live environment with our students. This schedule proposed for GOAL is very similar to their current schedule. So our GOAL students attend on a shortened period of time normally on a day-to-day basis. Their day consists of both some in, live instruction and also some remote learning through edgenuity. So that is their schedule on a typical school year. So what we did is we built their five periods aligned to what they are currently accustomed to and also built in that student support piece. We wanted to make sure that we had that time for that SEL check-in. They also would have Wednesdays where it would be the opportunity to provide some small group or to just have time to make sure that they're working on either their Google Classroom or their edgenuity activities.
For our students who are attending Eastview Academy, they would receive live instruction from their teachers, but they would follow the schedule that would be appropriate for their levels. So for example, elementary students would follow the elementary schedule, junior high and high school would follow their respective schedules as well. We recognize that these school days are somewhat longer than what they receive at Eastview Academy during live or onsite learning. But we anticipate that this additional time that they will have will be utilized for student support, assignment completion and participation in related services such as social work services. For the Pathways Transition Program, they too will have live sessions that will be offered by their teachers for the students participating in our transition program. They will follow a schedule, go to the next slide, that is going to replicate what they would receive in onsite instruction. You can see here that the schedule is in fifteen-minute increments. And during this time, they would receive their functional ELA, their independent, or their consumer math instruction, independent living skills, employability, social development and also the opportunity for recreation and leisure. You will also note that there is some independent learning time throughout the day. It's during these periods where if they require access to teaching assistance support in order to complete activities, they will be able to do so. At the end of the day, as is comparable to other schedules, there will be the opportunity for teacher plan and collaboration. And also on Wednesdays for teachers to be attending IEP meetings, planning for their students as well.
So we have also developed, again, this is Shannon Luters, Director of Junior High Education. So we have developed some expectations for specific groups and I will start with our student expectations during our Remote for All. Daily attendance will be taken by our teachers on the Go Live days. And then students will complete an attendance survey on the Wednesday or the non-live day. Our students will need to complete that attendance verification survey within Google Classroom by one-thirty that day for each of their classes. And this gives our teachers the time to see who is in class and then input the attendance into our system. All students will need to check their email daily. Now, we recognize that that is our fifth through our twelfth graders only for communication from teachers and/or staff members. All students will be expected to check their Google Classroom daily for any activities that are being assigned by their teachers, any assignments. And then all of our students will be expected to participate in our learning activities provided. And then following still with more student expectations, we want our students and expect our students to know each of our teachers' student support times so that they know when they can get extra help. We want them to be responsible and advocate for themselves and email their teachers with any questions that they have, but allowing for a time period until the end of the next school day to receive a response back from that teacher. Of course, this is age-appropriate, so we would expect for our youngest students that email might come from a parent. We fully expect, as in a typical school day, that our kids will complete and submit assignments by the assigned due date. They will produce and submit high-quality original work to their teachers. And then be respectful to themselves, their teachers and their peers while they are on their Go Live sessions. And then it is really important that they keep up with their grades and check in Google Classroom for assignments and then into our Tyler Student Information System to monitor their own progress. Just as in a regular school day, our students will be expected to complete all assessments and assignments. And then our students would be expected to understand that the guidelines that are in our Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbooks remain in effect at all times. All right. And then student Go Live expectations. We need them to be logged in on time for each of their Go Live sessions through the Google Hangouts Meet, just as in a typical school day. They need to be on time to class, so they need to be on time to their Google Hangouts. We have found that if all mute their audio when they're not speaking, it prevents the feedback that occurs, so expectation would be that they are on mute when they are not speaking. We need them to keep their cameras on so that the teachers can monitor their classrooms during the live sessions unless the teacher decides that it would be appropriate for them to turn off their cameras at a certain time during class. We expect that our students would know their teacher's expectations. We have broad and general expectations, but each teacher may put some additional expectations on with their class periods. And so we would expect them to follow those expectations as well. We want our kids to ask clarifying questions of their teachers. And we want them to talk one at a time and to be effective listeners. We want our students to only post appropriate comments in the chat and then to use respectful language and be appropriate in their behavior at all times. And lastly, we expect that our students will participate only in their assigned classroom sessions.
Again, I'm Lindsay Allen, Director of Elementary Education. Here is a sample of what parent expectations would look like through remote learning. We would like to have parents ensure their student is able to log into the Google Classroom as well as monitor the Google Classroom to make sure their student is completing all assignments. Elementary will also be sending home weekly progress reports through the Google Classroom so that parents can review the sheet of completed and missing assignments. It will be important for parents to monitor grades by accessing the Google Classroom and Mastery Connect Parent Portal for elementary parents. Secondary parents in grades six through twelve will utilize the Tyler Student Information System in order to monitor their students' grades. We do encourage parents to find a school space at home so that students have a learning spot, just like they have their own desk or table spot in a school building. This goes along with keeping the school day as normal as possible by having the student follow a regular schedule. We're asking parents to encourage effective communication with their teachers, and this includes the use of email in grades five through twelve. And again, Shannon already said, students are going to be expected to check their emails daily. It is extremely important for parents to let the learning process take place. Students might struggle as they are learning new concepts and that's okay. If this happens, parents can reach out to the teacher for elementary or have their student reach out to the teacher in junior high or high school to get additional help during the student support times. So it's okay if the kids don't have all the answers. We have embedded student support times where our SD 308 staff will be able to provide small group instruction to help the students. And as always, parents should reach out to their students' teachers if there are any questions about their Google Classroom or their students' progress throughout the remote learning period. As we have shared sample expectations for students and parents, there are also teacher expectations during remote learning. All district teachers will utilize the Google Classroom as the platform for learning so that it's consistent for all students, elementary through high school. And the teachers will utilize engaging activities that are aligned to the district-approved curriculum while following the scope and sequence for each curricular area. There is built-in teacher work time throughout the week, so teachers are able to collaborate with each other to ensure equitable learning experiences. And teachers will be expected to post a basic outline of topics that will be covered each week so that students and parents understand what the week will look like. This will be posted in the Google Classroom each Monday by eight o'clock in the morning. As you know, we have increased the amount of Go Live sessions and teachers will host at least four per week for each class that they teach. These sessions will be focused on live instruction and will not be used as a quick check-in with students or to show videos. Every day, teachers will have designated, will have time designated as student support time in order to answer student questions or work in small groups to reteach, support or enrich to meet students' educational needs. We also ask that teachers respond to student and parent emails within twenty-four hours during school days, so there is a quick response time. We do know that it's important to have regular communication between students, staff and parents, so teachers will provide a welcome email at the beginning of remote learning in order to share the following information. Their school email address, directions on how to access the Google Classroom, directions on how to access primary sources such as workbooks, textbooks and online curriculum, the teacher's expectations for attendance and classroom learning and management, directions on how to participate in student support times and their grading practices. As students submit assignments, teachers will provide weekly feedback in a variety of ways, through conversations, through emails or through the Google Classroom. We want to make sure that students are getting feedback on a regular basis. So it could be more often than once a week, but at least weekly. And finally, teachers will be expected to collaborate with special education case managers and related service personnel in order to ensure they are following all 504s and IEPs to best meet the needs of our students.
Good evening. I'm Renee Sartor, the Director of English Learners. This slide refers to those English learner teachers that push in, pull out or co-teach as their mode of support for English learner students. Their support would mirror the way they support students in person, which includes collaborating with general education teachers to make linguistic modifications and accommodations to assignments, activities and assessments to their lessons. This can take the form of assisting during the general education teacher's live Google time, providing recorded videos and virtual live meetings with the groups they serve during independent or student support time. The focus of recorded videos will be on reinforcing and making linguistic modifications to the Language Arts standards being taught. And the focus of the live time will be to build academic oracy with students. This slide is for all those teaching English learner students in a self-contained classroom, including early childhood classroom teachers, dual-language and sheltered teachers in elementary and junior high, and teachers teaching sheltered classes at the high school. They will follow the same guidance as general education teachers in regards to schedules, Google Classroom and video sessions. As is their common practice, teachers embed language instruction in their teaching. During live sessions, teachers should focus on building oral language proficiency in the target language, meaning Spanish in the case of dual-language. We'll provide resources and programs in Spanish to adhere to the language allocation plan as closely as possible with regard to the percentages of time in English and Spanish for each subject taught.
I'm Denise Hildebrand, the Executive Director of Special Education. I neglected to reintroduce myself when I spoke about Eastview Academy and Transition Program schedules. So while our special education teachers are going to follow the overall teacher expectations, we recognize that they have specific roles and responsibilities within our district. For each student with an individual education plan, a student remote learning plan will be developed by the case manager and the IEP team. And this plan will outline how specific goals will be addressed, it will have progress monitored and how accommodations and modifications will be provided. As we have received no extensions by the U.S. Department of Education for any of our evaluation and annual review timelines, we will continue to make sure that we meet those timelines and it's certainly incumbent on our case managers and our related service providers and program administrators to ensure that we do so. IEP meetings will be scheduled and facilitated by case managers as scheduled, just as they would if we were in onsite learning. And teachers will continue to collaborate with their general education counterparts in co-teaching classes, pushing in for instructional support or working with students with IEPs during that student independent work time. Our related service providers also have specific expectations. And when I say related service providers, I'm referring to our social workers, school psychologists, speech and language pathologists and our occupational and physical therapists primarily. As part of the IEP team, that related service provider needs to identify how those services will be provided on that student's remote learning plan. So a collaboration between the case manager and the related service providers is important. At all levels, early childhood through transition, related service providers will collaborate with teachers in the provision of services. They may co-present with teachers or provide services to students either live or in pre-recorded sessions, or they may work with students during that student independent work time or during that student support time. If we institute a remote learning for all format and we are not under a stay-at-home order, we will offer live onsite-related services for students. We recognize that there are specific services that are very difficult to implement remotely, physical therapy services as an example. Assessments will also be conducted in person, especially for those components that require face-to-face administration. And in doing so, of course, we're going to continue to follow all safety precautions in order to ensure the safety of both our students and staff. Our related service providers will continue to document their services in My Service Tracker, which is an online documentation program. Our social workers have played a very critical role this spring during remote learning and will continue to do so. They'll provide services for social-emotional learning and they will support students and families in accessing mental health services or crisis support. And while our board-certified Behavior Analysts, or BCBAs, are not related services per se, we do have them working with our students in our Skills, Stars and EVA programs. And they will also be available to provide supports to teachers and to parents in order to assist students in accessing learning opportunities successfully. Our 504 Coordinator expectations will not change for a remote learning format as what we would do compared to what we would do in an onsite instruction. Our coordinators will continue to communicate with teachers to ensure that those accommodations that students might have who have five or four plans are being implemented. They're going to collaborate with teachers in order to determine how best to provide those accommodations within a virtual learning format. And they're going to continue to facilitate those initial reevaluation and annual 504 plan meetings. I've addressed somewhat briefly what our teaching assistants are going to provide support for, and this speaks broadly to all teaching assistants, including general ed, special ed and our English learner teaching assistants. They will have an increased presence in our student learning as compared to the spring, as I had mentioned earlier. They'll work with students on assignment completion during the independent work time and they will also collaborate with teachers in identifying appropriate practice activities and adapting student assignments. And they will have the opportunity to participate live with teachers during live instruction as well.
So my name is Heather Kincaid. I serve as our Executive Director of Accountability in High School. And I would like to talk about some of our counselor expectations. We know our counselors' main focus is social-emotional learning, student support, college and career readiness and really a focus on graduation and academic planning. So they will continue to focus on social-emotional learning with check-ins on our students, whether that be on an individual or group basis. They will have the opportunity to provide some more support, either during the student support time or on Wednesday, looking at their engagement. In addition, they also participate on our problem-solving and M-. In addition, they also participate on our problem-solving and MTSS teams, so they can identify students that are struggling, either with social-emotional or academic, and provide that connection with the teachers and the administration. For college and career readiness, they take the lead with the implementation of our Naviance curriculum and lessons, so it gives the students the opportunity to experience and focus on both college or career planning, so they will continue to implement that. In terms of their scheduling and academic planning, obviously, our counselors participate in graduation checks to make sure that our students are monitored on a continuous basis, that they are earning credits in the areas that they need to be, that they're aligning the classes that they take with their future goals, so that supports that they can continue to do on an individual or small-group basis. So the focus of our counselors are really support both academically and social-emotionally. In terms of our administrators, their main focus will be on communication, ensuring quality instruction, supporting our students, especially our at-risk students, attendance, and training and assisting our teachers. We understand that this is a shift from in-person to remote learning, and our teachers will need some help and support with that shift. So in terms of communication, we're asking our administration to contact not only their staff, but our parents on a weekly basis. In terms of ensuring quality instruction, we've asked our administrative team to partner with a department and basically to push into some of those Go Live sessions. With the increased connection with our students through the Go Live sessions being four days a week, we want to make sure that we are delivering quality instruction to our students. So we're offering support to our teachers, not only through the training, but also with our students. In terms of our at-risk students, we need to make sure that we're continuously monitoring that. We have some very high-risk students that we need to ensure that has that individual connection with. Our attendance, as we've heard before, will now be on a daily basis. At junior high and high school, it becomes not only daily, but also period, so there's a lot of attendance being taken. So we know that that's an undertaking, but it's an important undertaking because we want to ensure that our students are participating in daily instruction. So our administrative team will be assisting and monitoring student attendance, and then, as I mentioned before, the training and working with our teachers and staff.
All right, thank you very much. We're now going to transition a few of our speakers. All right, we're going to first hear from Kyle Oleson, who is our new Director of Technology. Kyle just started his third week in SD 308, so welcome, the board welcomes you to our meeting this evening, Kyle.
Good luck, Kyle.
Thanks for inviting me tonight. I'm going to go through my slide for the technology department. The technology department is planning to send a survey to staff and students to determine the number of devices that the district will need to loan in order to support remote learning. We are ordering roughly 2,200 Chromebooks using grant funds. We're budgeting for devices to go one-to-one at the high school via a leasing program, and we're considering implementing a technology fee of $50 to help with the one-to-one sustainability at junior high and high school. I would like to note right now that current inventory levels of Chromebooks are backordered until about September, October, so we're working with as many companies as we can to see if we can figure that out. Our user support team is planning to add a section to the website with training documents for parents specifically. We are organizing office hours for the technology support, or for the technology support team to support staff as much as possible, and we are also working with the curriculum to address in-house software concerns.
Good evening, I'm Kristy Tyler, Chief Financial Officer, and I'm going to start with meal considerations. Our most current information is that we will need to follow the National School Lunch Program guidelines that were relaxed when schools shut down in March, and those are specifically that we will need to continue, I'm sorry, resume taking meal counts, specifically counting the number of free, reduced, and paid meals that are being distributed. In addition, we need to resume the offer versus serve requirement. This gives students options in the entree and vegetable and fruit components of the meal. This will provide some additional challenges that would significantly change our current model of the drive-by curbside pickup. Therefore, we are exploring delivering, sending buses to strategic locations throughout the district in which those buses would deliver meals to those families, to families. The buses would include a driver and perhaps two monitors. One monitor would pack the meal components for the students, and the other monitor would record the student's information for the meal counts. We may also need to provide individual meal delivery for our McKinney-Vento foster students and those living in rural areas of the district, because there would be no safe place to park a bus and have students get to that location. So another consideration is because the only lunch money that would be collected would be most likely from reduced meals, because there, you know, paid students would probably not use this service. And in addition, there would be no à la carte offerings for students if we go remote, so we can expect a significant decrease in our sales to student revenue. Along with that, due to decreased participation, we will see a reduction in the National School Lunch Program reimbursement that we receive from the federal and the state government. Some transportation considerations. This is the group that will probably see the biggest decrease in their normal workload if the district went to a full remote learning model. However, our goal is to keep our staff employed, as we want to make sure when students do return, our transportation team is ready to safely bring our students to and from school. So we have looked at some areas that our bus drivers and monitors could continue to provide a service to our district and to our community. So I already mentioned the meal delivery option. That would be one that we are exploring. In addition, we know right now that our private placement facilities are open and going to continue operations, so they would, those students would continue to require transportation. We are also looking at assisting with curbside services throughout the district, and that would be student pickup of materials and things like that. We are also looking at ways that we, our transportation department can look, work with some of our district partners, specifically the Oswego Land Park District with the Kids Connection. The bus drivers and monitors could perhaps work those, provide supervision for those students who are enrolled in those programs during the remote learning sessions. One other thing to consider is that during the 2020 school year shutdown, ISB did relax their rules and allowed any and all transportation and expenses to be reimbursable. At this point, we don't know if that will continue into the 2021 school year, so some of these optional routes that we're proposing may not be reimbursable. As for building and grounds, this group is an important component of keeping our students safe and our staff safe. So first, they would provide cleaning and sanitization of areas, building areas used by Kids Connection, building rentals, or our own staff. We would sanitize those areas at frequent intervals and at least once a night, and they are using chemicals that do meet CDC guidelines. During a shutdown, there are many tasks that can be completed that normally could not, or could not be completed during a normal school year, school day, or school year, and I've listed some of those there for you. Painting, floor stripping, carpet cleaning, things like that. This group would begin to tackle some of those tasks. Our grounds department would continue, because our weeds and our grass do not stop growing during a shutdown, unfortunately, so they would continue their work. And we do know there are some energy savings when our buildings are not 100% occupied, and I will go over those savings in a later slide.
Good evening, I'm Valerie Patterson, Executive Director of Student Services, and I would like to review some of the safety protocols in a remote environment that cover all buildings and many staff as well. Student Services leadership provides procedural steps for administration response to health, safety needs, and concerns of students, any inappropriate behavior that needs to be addressed. Some examples, even in a remote environment, might include disruption, even in a Go Live setting, any students experiencing a concern about bullying, any threats of any kind. And of course, we want to be very alert to our students who may have any risk of harm to self or others. And those are responded to in the regular school environment in a very prescriptive way with professionals that are trained, and we would do the same in the remote environment. Protocols to monitor daily attendance. We had Heather Kincaid speaking to that administratively. We expect our administrators to be able to monitor a lot of our at-risk students and their needs. Those protocols and that ability to know what to look at and what to maybe connect resources to students, that would be kind of where our department would step in and help support. Some of the student groups that we know during the spring session we needed to pay a lot more attention to, and we're making regular contacts through our district department, were our students that were DCFS-involved, including foster families. McKinney-Vento, our students who are struggling with the challenges of consistent home and/or other resources, students who would be considered chronically absent or truant, goal students, at times we needed to step in and provide some more resources for internet or some of these other pieces. Homebound and hospitalized students are a group that, again, need a lot of attention and support and almost weekly contacts and additional resources at times. Finally, the guidance for case-by-case investigation, intervention, and discipline aligned to our Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. We do a lot of work with administration to make sure that we're covering those responsibilities the same way in the remote environment that we would in the school environment, minus the fact that we would do it by phone or Google Hangouts to interact with students and families if information needed to be gained or shared. Finally, daily notification to Building Administration regarding student email account alerts. It was no surprise in March when we went remote that students had less social contact at school, so their emailing on their student accounts went way up, and we have this filtering system called Securely that screens for all kinds of words or activity that could be an issue, and we were responding to, on any given day, 50 to 100 email alerts that then have to be sorted and routed to Building Administration so that they can respond to them. Some of those are very real alerts and result in first responder type of connection, but again, that's a, that's a big piece of what happens with remote learning that is a little bit under the radar if you don't deal with it on a daily basis like our department does. And finally, support for any quarantine or notification procedures aligned to any agency guidance. There are a multitude of agencies that are all making sure certain things have to happen, so even if we're in a remote environment, if we have any students or staff that are engaged in coming into a building for any reason, such as Kid Connection or anything like that, we would want to be aware and be making sure that all those procedures and protocols were keeping our staff safe and certainly any students in our community.
Good evening, I'm Ken Miller, Executive Director of Human Resources, Payroll, and Benefits, and I'd like to talk about some of the staffing considerations. First, by going to remote, remote learning for all, we would significantly reduce the need for telework requests during the period of remote learning. It wouldn't be completely eliminated, because there may be some isolated examples of related service providers or looking at those that are providing support at the district level that may still need to look at telework accommodations, but it would significantly reduce the volume of requests that we would be receiving. By and large, it would maintain our current staffing levels. As Kristy Tyler had mentioned, there are some, there are some considerations that need to be worked out, and I look forward to working with her and with Ron Newcomer, the president of the Oswego Transportation Association, to try and ensure that they are able to continue their commitment to serving our students, regardless of the modality. It would also reduce our demand for substitute teachers. However, there would be the added, the added opportunity for us to look at ways to require, to provide or otherwise ensure that they've got logins, that they've got accounts, that they've got the ability to go live when the students go live, and that they're trained on all the latest techniques in remote learning to ensure that they're able to deliver high-quality education to our students the same way that we would expect out of our teachers. It would also decrease our potential costs from medical insurance, workers' compensation insurance, and unemployment insurance claims. When we're talking about medical insurance and unemployment insurance, it's important to note that we are self-insured for these. So for anything that we can do to be able to reduce our claims exposure for medical insurance, it's, our actuaries have estimated that it's approximately $450 for every, for every infection of COVID-19 that is mildly asymptomatic. It's approximately $1,225 for every moderate case. If there is an inpatient hospitalization, that number jumps to $35,000. If it goes to the intensive care unit, we're talking about $72,000. In addition, when we're looking at unemployment insurance, in looking back at our averages over the past few years, for education sports staff, the cost of providing unemployment insurance benefits to those employees is about $250 per employee per week. So as you can see, there are significant costs that would be potentially avoided by moving to this model.
Okay, Kristy Tyler, Chief Financial Officer again. I'm going to go over some of the financial impacts of a remote learning model. And we will start with staff savings. As Ken just mentioned, there is some significant cost to, if staff were to lose their position, so we are working hard to make sure that we can maintain or retain as many staff members as we can, not only for cost savings, but when school is up and running again, we want to make sure we're ready, set, ready to go. So some of these positions that I've mentioned up here and the amounts are based off the entire group not working, and some are for a reduction of staff in that category. For example, if school is completely remote, crossing guards, dean's assistants, playgrounds equipment, playground equipment, playground supervisors, excuse me, would not be needed for normal school day purposes. Others, such as substitutes, building nurses, bus drivers, monitors, would be at a reduced staff. The asterisks indicate groups that there may be opportunities for them with our district partners, such as the Park District, as I mentioned, or the Health Department, maybe to provide some support there. Finally, these savings are dependent on the collective bargaining agreement that these employees work under, as there may be a notification period that we would need to consider before we reduce staff. On the non-staff saving side, our back-to-school plan, sorry, included placing sanitizer and wipes in every classroom, items that would not be needed in such a large capacity if we were delivering instruction remotely. We do, would expect that the amount of classroom or building copies and supplies would be reduced. And going next, contracted certified nurse assistants. There could be a reduction in those services. Those are positions that we were not able to fill within the district, so those are nurses that we contract out with a third party. At last, Monday's board meeting, Val confirmed for the board that we would only pay for resource officers if school's in session, so there would be some savings there. And next are the energy savings that I referenced in an earlier slide, along with a reduction in the amount of waste hauling that would, waste that would be collected and hauled away. With buses not running at 100%, we would realize some savings in fuel. And then finally, the most recent approved transportation contracts included a clause to pay the vendors at 40% of their normal invoice in the event of an extended shutdown. We were able to negotiate that down from 80%, which was their initial offer. In the event of an extended shutdown, we were able to negotiate that down from 80%, which was their initial offer. On the expense side, as Ken mentioned, with any reduction enforced, we would see a corresponding increase in unemployment expenses. There would be, the significant increase in medical claims will cause a future premium increase, so maybe not for the 21 calendar year, but the 2022 calendar year, excuse me. That means our employer contribution rate would increase. There are also additional technology needs, Chromebooks, Wi-Fi connectivity, et cetera. And for those groups that are not normally traditionally involved with any kind of learning, perhaps we would offer some training for them, like the substitutes, the drivers and that, especially with the Google Classroom and things like that, that they're normally not used to. Revenue changes, as I mentioned, meal sales and reimbursement from the National School Lunch Program would greatly significantly decrease. Those are listed there, as well as the transportation claim. Even if we were to claim those optional miles, we would expect to see a significant decrease in the amount of the reimbursement. That reimbursement, though, would not impact us until the fiscal year 22 budget, because it's reimbursed the next year. Some of the student fees that we charge would be reduced, pay-to-ride services, the full-day kindergarten registration fee, Brokaw tuition, clubs and activities, we would still be offering what we could, but we would expect to see a decrease there. On the positive side, we did, as we've talked about before, we received some CARES funding. It's a reimbursement model, so as we spend the money, we submit for reimbursement. And that's about $984,000. And we just learned about the Digital Equity Grant that Kyle's been working on. And this is not our exact number, but we're estimating that number to be, our portion of that to be about $615,000.
Well, I know that was a long presentation, but when you're talking about running a school district for 18,000 students, 2,000-plus employees in a very different way, it's going to equal a lengthy presentation. So as you can see, 100% remote learning 2.0 looks quite a bit different than what we did in the spring. I know there was a lot of information and each board member probably has a lot of questions, so Mrs. Doyle, would you like to take us through that?
So first of all, I'd like to acknowledge our other two directors in the room, who've somehow managed to escape the main table. If you'd like to come introduce yourselves, at least so that everybody understands that you've been here also, you just got sneaky hiding out back there.
Good evening, I'm Dawn Samoski, Director of Transportation.
And I am Rob Allison, Director of Operations.
Thank you guys also for being here, and thank you everyone for presenting tonight. I don't know if I really just speak for myself here, but I would like you to know that this is a far more understandable picture than what I had expected to see tonight, so thank you very much for that. My only comment, and I'm going to pass it around to everyone else to share, is the biggest thing that stuck out to me here was our annual CARES Act funding allotment is $984,403. And then I went back to our expenses side, and the very first thing, the first two lines on non-staff savings being remote, is that we're going to need to spend $1 million, what is this, $35,000, just on classroom disinfectant wipes and hand sanitizer, which is more than our CARES Act funding. So I'm a little concerned there, because that's a problem for a lot of reasons. But other than that, I think I'm curious to hear what my fellow board members have to say.
I just want to ask in general, and Mrs. Doyle question in particular, when you put together this plan, did you consider the feedback that you got in the spring from the parents and the community members that were concerned about different things? Was that analyzed down to each person took the feedback that pertained to their particular category and tried to make adjustments based on that?
Yes, as we went through all of the questions and comments that we got, because we had a running tally and pieces, if you will, from our questions from the spring, we had a daily meeting at that point with the directors and talked through what are some of the problems and started making notes then, about the things that we could do to improve. We also got some feedback from our staff on what that would look like and how we would do those pieces. So yes, much of the feedback that we had gotten about it needs to be more robust, it needs to have a monitoring piece so that there's more quality insurance. All of those things are things we took into consideration when we built this new plan.
Okay, and I only have one more question. Do the Google Classroom instructions that you're going to give out for any kind of remote learning include how to do that on a phone, an iPad, a computer? Because some of the feedback I heard was that depending on the device, the instructions needed to be different?
Yes, those are some of the things that we have put together and want to do that, but that's also something that Kyle is looking into, to having office hours where people could call in and staff could help get directions on how to better support our parents or our students that are struggling with that.
Okay, great, thank you. Who'd like to go next?
I'll throw it in. I don't know who if we're going to just throw them out there or to the specific director. When we had the piece about the counselors and their interaction with students, is the intention to be that counselors will be checking in via video with certain students as well? As if those students that had weekly appointments or bi-weekly appointments with their counselors, is it still the intention that they are going to have those in a specified allotment of time during the day?
So the counselors would have access to Google Hangout meets to be able to schedule a time with a parent and a student or a small group of students to work. We've actually already even talked about scheduling some of our college visits remotely. And instead of bringing in that college rep, hosting a virtual session in place of some of those college visits. So even under our current guidelines, we're trying to provide all of our same opportunities and information to our students, whether in-person or remote.
So students that were receiving counseling services at the conclusion of last year, their counselors will pick up the ball, check in with them and facilitate bi-weekly meetings if necessary with their group of students?
If necessary, we've already had counselors in over the summer too, to do graduation checks. Obviously, with summer school, there's a need for potentially classroom changes. So we've had counselors working throughout the summer to do some of those graduation checks, to work on class assignments and schedules. So that would definitely continue. Actually, we have some counselors coming in next week. So that support has to be ongoing to our students and our families.
Okay, thanks. And then I have, I think, both a question for Ms. Patterson and Dr. Hildebrand. For the check-ins, the most vulnerable students that we have, we have homeless students. We have students that I think barely make it to school based on home life. We talk about setting up a nice little workspace for them in homes that probably barely have a table to eat at. How are, how do you intend to really monitor these students, ensure they're actively engaged in being brought into this type of system?
Well, the first thing that we talked about was just monitoring all that attendance data, how are the grades and the progress going? In other words, how are the kids doing? There are some other indicators we know very well, and it was just hit on a moment ago at the high school level, that the counselors know their caseloads of students that they probably need to check in with right away. So a couple of things that we'll be doing is making sure that we're working across all the schools to check in with those populations of students. And to assess if they share with us that there are some gaps or some needs. The district doesn't have the ability necessarily to plug all those holes and fix it, but we can go out into the community and look for the resources from our school community resource team. We can look for our Oswego Community CARES group to maybe help us out. And for some of those populations, they have access to resources such as DCFS. Our foster children, if they were struggling, DCFS came in and provided the district devices or internet to give to those kids. So we do have some resources. It won't be a perfect science, but I think the biggest, the biggest piece is to make sure that we are connecting with those kids every week to make sure we're making everything as smooth as possible and providing that we care about you and we know where you're at and we're trying to make it better. We have, I've heard so many psychologists and social workers say that even over this past spring, when we were remote, they were checking in and they were even trying to find ways to creatively give families, you know, options to get what they needed.
We actually, you know, part of the topic that you mentioned was their classroom experience at home. In our committee meetings yesterday, we had a really good suggestion by a teacher that there's a feature in the Google Hangout Meet where you can set a consistent background. So it kind of levels the playing field of all the students on, at one time within the class. So hopefully, students are getting distracted by what's in the background going on behind the student, but their background then looks the same. So that was one of the ideas shared yesterday in our committee meetings.
No palm trees like Heather had at our board meeting.
Like that was a backdrop?
I can appreciate that, I just know that there's a huge, huge population of vulnerable families and students, and I really do have concerns about those falling through the cracks. And it has to be hard to be able to monitor them, and I just hope we have the staff and resources that can hopefully find those, especially when we know we have certain areas that have a high move-in rate during that beginning portion of the year and making sure they're accounted for.
And one thing to add, we're also anticipating that we may see our levels of students and families accessing McKinny Vento services or having those temporary living arrangements escalating. We've even talked about on our team at the district level that we can help buildings look at and connect with their families. But we too would be willing to go out and get a little bit creative about resources. Sometimes you find the neat pockets of where there's a church that says, hey, we need some, you know, activities to feel connected to the community. And if we can share information about what's needed, the School Community Resource Coalition, I mean, there are some great resources. And half the time, it's just about knowing what's needed and then, you know, plugging those things together that could help.
Okay, great, thank you. And I'll limit it to hopefully one question for Dr. Hildebrand. As you go forward, you stated that there would be some in-person options for special education, maybe slash IEP students. What would your parameters be or your criteria be to determine who that type of service would be offered to?
So when the IEP team develops the student remote learning plan, that's the opportunity for them to collaborate together with the parent to make a determination as to what services can be successfully delivered in an online format and what services would require in-person. And at that time, then that conversation needs to be undertaken with the parent to see if they feel comfortable in bringing their child to the school building for that purpose. And I think it really becomes an individual conversation with the parent regarding what they perceive their students needs to be, together with what the IEP school-based team determines would be most beneficial for their child.
And would that also cover those students that, I mean, I've seen pictures of classrooms that were just torn apart throughout the course of the school year. I know that there are students, I've sat in and volunteered through early elementary years and have seen students that are just all over the place. And the expectation of them being in such a structured schedule in front of a computer at home with all sorts of distractions, what sorts of protocols will be in place to ensure that they're actually, other than monitoring grades, which is great, but how are we ensuring that they're getting the attention and the education that they deserve as well?
So with the increased number of live sessions that we're going to be offering during remote learning, that allows for the teacher to have much more of an interaction or the related service provider to be interacting more frequently with a student, we found even during the spring, during remote learning, that there were parents who reached out to us to say they're having a very difficult time with that kind of academic behavior, focusing and being an active participant. And so with the support of our school social workers, school psychologists, and also with our behavior analysts, we were able to problem solve together with the families to change the kind of activity that was being provided to minimize distractions. For example, to focus more on the teacher than on the classroom when it was through Google Hangout's meet, to assist the student in being able to participate more fully. So we've already had some experience with just kind of working together with families, even when we were in a more limited format. And given that we have an increased number of behavior analysts in our programs, where we have students who do have those specific challenges, we anticipate that we will be able to more fully support them in this format.
Can I tag-team on that for a minute? So I wrote, which may or may not be politically correct, I wrote, "It's a big shift from do-whatever-when-ever to regular-school-hour requirements." So what I noticed was, instead of kids being able to sleep till noon and then getting online and maybe doing a couple of things, now we're requiring them to be up and online and present in their education, which I can appreciate. Some other pieces I appreciated was the admin push-in, which I think is awesome, especially teacher evaluation cycles. Like it would be great if our admin pushes in, you know, even if it's just to get to know some of those kids, we've got a new principal at OHS, you know what I mean? Like to get to know some of those things, it's not in-person, but I think that's an improvement. And then I think I appreciate that we did some collaboration time at all the levels. I appreciate that you guys added that piece. And then I just, I had a couple of clarifying questions on, I pulled up the transportation considerations. So my kids went through Kids Connection, and I just, like, so I have some questions on the cleaning and janitorial. Like who's actually cleaning up after Kids Connection, because I know they're pretty late sometimes. I think it's six?
Six fifteen.
Six fifteen, yeah.
But, you know, we are responsible for cleaning that, because I would feel better if it was us cleaning that, because I know that it is us.
It is us, yes.
Okay, and then my other question is on the buses, you talked about providing staff support to Kids Connection, but I wasn't sure what you meant about the buses, because I know Kids Connection has their own buses and their own drivers.
Oh, I meant that potentially our drivers or monitors could be the supervisors of students during remote learning. So perhaps we put five of the Kids Connection kids in a classroom and the bus drivers acting like a proctor, you know, getting the kids logged on and just making sure they're staying on task.
So then my clarifying question would be, is that a Kids Connection employee, a Park District employee, I mean, or would that be a school district employee?
That would remain a school district employee, and we would work out through an intergovernmental agreement what that would look like. That's not all been finalized yet, that's just ideas we've been talking about.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, like, I appreciate the thinking outside the box, I just wanted to make sure who was responsible for what.
That actually just brought up a really good question I have about the Kids Connection, thank you. Wait a second. This is the 100% remote learning plan, assuming that we have to go to remote at some point in the school year.
Correct.
Would we be allowed to have a Kids Connection? They weren't allowed to operate last spring.
They were.
They were?
You have to limit on how many kids, I think.
For essential workers.
Yeah.
For essential workers.
They are essential workers, they're daycare.
Well, they are essential workers and they were open for children of other essential workers, because everybody else couldn't go to work. But there are families who would have to utilize Kids Connection, even if we go 100% remote, that doesn't necessarily mean that those parents are not working still. So you can't leave a six-year-old home alone, so we're saying that they would then have to go to Kids Connection.
So you would be able to operate.
And then a bus driver would be their supervisor? And then a bus driver would be their supervisor, potentially. That's just an idea, but I mean.
Right, right. That, that's just one of the things we're looking at to keep those.
So you don't have that, yeah, yeah, that's, thank you for the honesty on that.
Correct, right.
For sure.
We're still in, uh, there's a lot to be finalized with the Park District. We're still in talks with them.
Okay, so, but my big question was that I wasn't sure that we could have Kids Connection if we had to go 100% remote at all. So, thank you.
Maybe I missed something completely? That, that conversation just totally confused me because that conversation of Kid Connection, like you said, or somebody said, these students are all at home, regardless of whether their parents are at work or not, these, these students are remote, or unless someone's saying, Kids Connection is operating all day long for the kid, for the parents that are working.
Right.
So they are leaving the home, going to a facility with Kids Connection.
Right.
While the parents are at work.
Right, I mean, they don't have to use Kids Connection.
Well, but it also couldn't be utilized for parents that work from home that were choosing Kids Connection all day anyway.
Right, right. There's definitely a lot of things that would, like, scenarios that sure, parents at home right now are already com- composing emails about.
Yeah, it was meant as an opportunity, I mean, for, as an option for those who don't have any other options, so that's the reason why we started that conversation, right?
Well, and I appreciate us trying to help people come up with solutions, um, because it's hard and if we can help in any way, I think it's great.
Agreed, yeah. I, I had a, um, question, this might be silly, um, but as we're talking about this, um, would buildings, uh, would, it would teachers, um, who, um, may not feel that their home environment is conducive to, um, teaching, cause there's so much live stuff going on, would they be able to utilize, um, classrooms and would that be required or just?
Not required, it would be an option if they'd like to take advantage of it though.
Thank you.
That was my first question, Heather.
I did have just another kind of logistic, or, yeah, I'm, just kind of a question regarding, um, some of the schedules. So for instance, the element, elementary schedule, just kind of logistically, how, can you give me an idea of how that will work, like in terms of how are students navigating through this? Will they log on in the morning at, you know, that nine o'clock time and then stay, stay on that whole time, even during break, or, you know, how does that work?
No, we anticipate, and Lindsay, if you want to come up with two, that's fine, but that they wouldn't stay on that whole time. They would have some time where they're live, then they would have a break, then, you know, they would be able to, to move around, go to the bathroom, then come back to, uh, the meet. And the Google Hangouts Meet time that you send, it can be the same for all day and you can just say, meet back at 10 o'clock. I think our kids are really gonna know how to tell time, um, a lot better, um, with all of this at, at the elementary day. I don't know if you have anything else to add, Lindsay?
Well, and we are working with the tech department to see if it's possible for younger students, kindergarten through fourth grade, to have email accounts. That way they can have access to Google Calendar and then teachers would be able to put those live sessions right into their Google Calendar and they, then they could just click on it. So we're trying to make it as easy as possible. Uh, the tech department is also looking into different apps where teachers would be able to go in and remote into students, uh, Chromebooks. That way if the student is struggling with getting a video going or can't find something, the teacher would be able to support that way and it's not always falling on the parent. So that's something, keeping our fingers crossed that Kyle's gonna be looking at too.
Um, so I guess I'm wondering, how does that work then with attendance? I just worry a little bit about them getting in, getting off and, um, you know, i- is the teacher, you know, just kind of assessing, we're all back, you know, after math independent time or, you know, our lunch break, um, is it just, yeah?
Yeah, the students would be expected to participate in those live sessions, so they would need to be there and the teachers will be taking attendance.
Each time, okay, gotcha. And then the same with junior high and high school then, are they're, they're logging, they're changing, you know, they're, they're following their schedule and so they're logging in to each Google class, each teacher's Google classroom or Google Hang, yeah, Google classroom, not Google Hangout, um, or maybe it is, I don't, um, so they'll be responsible for doing that, there's attendance taken at each, okay, well, that's helpful. Um, how are assessments and tests going to be taken and administered, um?
That's actually one of our upcoming steps. We will be bringing together groups of teachers, um, at the elementary level, we'll be bringing the different specials teachers together and taking a look at that and then bringing back committees for math, uh, English Language Arts and Science and taking a look at our assessments. Uh, we need to look at our, our standards, what are our power standards going to be because we're not going to be able to teach every standard that we usually do.
Right.
So we've got some work ahead of us to be able to look at those standards and then how are we going to assess?
Okay.
So, um, just full transparency, that is something that within the next week to two weeks that we are really gonna be digging into.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question on that? Cause we got an email today that the state of Illinois said they were doing, uh, I think it's the SAT in October. So they're, like, the state is planning to be in school.
That's Heather, I'm not answering that one.
Why, yes. So it is scheduled in October, um, so unless College Board and ISB, um, has a, uh, remote option, it would need to be in person. Um, it is just for the 12th graders. You have to be, um, enrolled in, uh, our state inf- Student Information Center as a 12th grader, because it really serves as a replacement for the spring test that was canceled, um, for our juniors last year. Um, so with the entire high school and just testing one class, um, I'm sure that we could provide appropriate social distancing, but yes, no, it would have to be in person unless College Board and Illinois State Board of Education did something differently.
But as a reminder for the general public, that's the one you need to take to graduate high school, unless they...
That is correct. It is currently a graduation requirement and it...
Not ours, the state's.
The state's requi- yes. But if we're 100% remote, in theory, we could, could use other buildings for that as well, like assign students to, to keep social distancing, whatever level we're at at that point, right?
So right now, um, both high schools are registered through College Board as testing sites. We would have to, um, look into getting other buildings approved as testing sites.
Well, let's hope we don't have to do that.
Okay, so I have a few questions because the rest of you don't get off that easy on standardized testing, IAR. Um, what is the status on that at this point?
I have heard no mention of...
Heather's our director of data, so...
True. I like how you're both like, no. Sorry.
Mrs. Doyle, but we're going to defer that one to Heather.
So currently ISB released an assessment calendar. So IAR, ISA, um, so both our Illinois Assessment of Readiness and our Illinois Science Assessment and our access testing are all tentatively on the calendar for spring. Um, the good part of state testing, besides currently the SAT for our 12th graders, is it's in the spring. So it does give us some window of time to, um, work on, on the calendar, but currently it is on Illinois State Board's calendar.
All right, let me see if this one will be you guys. Are you ready? I mean, this is my last try.
I have a whole list.
Okay, so, um, the testing that we do at the beginning of the year to monitor summer slide and then we do again at the end of the first semester, that's you guys, right? Or is that Heather?
So if you're talking about the local assessments that we do, that's us, STAR assessments?
Star assessments, yes. Oh, that's Heather too. I'm out.
But our local assessments, if you're talking about that, again, we'll be looking at, so for example, kindergartners, if you're looking at, uh, number, being able to count your numbers, your letters and all of that, that's what we'll be putting our committees together for, to determine what we're doing. But STAR testing?
Yes, so our benchmark testing, uh, whether it's STAR or Fastbridge, um, that is currently in discussions. We've reached out to Renaissance to start the discussions about testing remotely, um, so where, uh, what would be the implications if we were to have the teachers then share the code to access the test, how would that look like, what would be the impact on testing norms? So that is a conversation that we've started. Um, we have meetings actually set up later this week with myself and, uh, Faith Alquist about our assessment calendar and what that would look like, because we want to gather some information about our students, but we would need to factor in what does remote testing really look like. So those are conversations that we've started, we just have not finalized those conversations.
So what are we going to be doing the first few weeks to see where kids are at compared to where they left us in March?
That is what we will be working on over the next few weeks with our committees to come back together and determine what assessments are we going to be giving and what does that look like.
And that'll be based on also, um, as Lindsay mentioned, about the, those priority or power standards, um, to make sure we know what the must haves are and then the nice-to-haves would come next. And so we would need to form assessments to figure out where our kids were on, um, the standards.
And obviously there are two very different approaches, one where we have our students in person, um, in front of us that we can assess and then the how will we do this, um, if we are doing this via computer screen? Um, and right now, we're needing to explore both of those, uh, and figure out both of those, uh, options as to what we would do. And then there's also the scenario that I have some of my class here and then I have other people in elementary that are in remote learning and how to coordinate all of those pieces, uh, and how we will do that. So, uh, and I also, what we haven't talked about here, cause this is really remote learning as we go, just wanted to make sure that people understand, if we went to universal remote learning at the start of the school year, we would not go day one, second grade, here's what everything would look like. There would need to be small groups and welcoming and how do we build that and sessions for parents and this is what Google Classroom looks like, there would have to be orientation to remote learning, just like there would be orientation the very first day, we don't advise teachers to be like, okay, the lecture for today is, and go straight through without, you know, some relationship building and that kind of thing. So the schedules that you've seen would not be day one, we would need to be boosting more of the time for social emotional learning and more small group introductions until we got the process going.
So then that leads to the question, what, what's gonna trigger needing to go to this plan at this point? How, how do you, how do you envision this would be triggered?
Uh, that would be the board giving us direction or if we'd have to have conversations, because this is, this plan that you just saw is the plan that we, this would start off the school year and go the first semester, just like Shannon had said.
Or this plan would be if the governor puts us back.
Uh, or that, but for the one level, it looks a little bit different. It's nine period or six period.
So, okay, so, so what happens, and humor me on this, what happens, so we go week one, I think I heard this example somewhere, and you, you get a couple of kids that go to the nurse with a symptom and now both classes are quarantined and whatever that level looks like.
Yeah, that's coming in the next presentation as we clarify the, uh, questions from last month.
So that goes with, but, but, okay, so that would be, um, how, how am I trying to get to this? Does anyone, so, wanna help me out with this?
What you're, what you're saying, Lori, I think is that if you start out with a choice kind of menu and then at, after two weeks, two classes go into quarantine, are they using this online?
Exactly.
Okay.
Is this the remote learning for all? Would this be what's used if at some point during the year, we have to go back to phase two or, um, because of staffing levels, we, we no longer have the staff in the buildings? I- is this the plan that would be used then?
Yes.
So it would transfer fairly seamlessly except for the junior high?
And the high school.
Where we wouldn't be able to do that one option, but there's another option there?
Right, right, and the students that started off with edgenuity, which we'll talk about in the next presentation, they really need to understand the difference between remote learning by choice?
Right.
And then remote learning for all. The students that start off with edgenuity of the remote learning for choice would continue with that choice, not then switch over to what we've just discussed.
That's the clear, that's, that's where I was trying to head with it. Thank you, everybody, for helping me out to get there.
That segues to one of my questions, which is if parents choose remote learning at the beginning of the school year, at the junior high and high school level, so they're doing, planning to do edgenuity and before the school year starts, there is a decision made either by the board or by the governor knocking us down back to level three or two, would those students go with this district remote plan or are they locked in edgenuity?
They'd have the choice.
If the school year had not started yet?
I would like to say that they have the choice. If it happens 12 hours before school starts, there's a degree of scheduling changes and all of those kinds of things that would need to have happened. So if we're only doing this with 12-hour notice, I would suggest that we postpone the start of the school year a couple of days, um, and to be able to take action to get all of those things in place, because, um, it takes a little time to totally switch, um, and get information. I know, I, but I mean, we've done amazing things in the last six months that I wouldn't have thought possible, but it depends on the degree of time of which we have warning that we're switching over. But yes, we would like to have people have that choice.
Okay, great, that makes total sense. Um, I, I do have some other questions.
Please.
Yeah, yeah. I wrote, I wrote down my page numbers, page 13, which is, this is Luter's, um, that suggested time for the remote PE and the remote portion of Language Arts, is that set in stone or is that just like a recommendation? Could you, if my kid's better with reading, clicking in the brain? Okay, so that's just like a suggested... Yes, it's a time during the school day that they would have an opportunity to, to use, um, but it is not that everyone has to do their physical education. PE first thing in the morning, you could do your Language Arts then. Completely flexible. Got it. But if you're a parent, you can tell your kid, no, this, they said you have to do it now. Just wanna clarify. You're in charge, okay.
Is there training for parents on how to do that?
Um, I, not sure. Not sure that that exists. We can offer some training, okay. On page 15, this is about the high school schedule. So my question is, what about classes that really require students to be in person at least to some extent? So at our high school, we have tons of amazing electives and we talk a lot about college and career readiness and I know particularly for a lot of seniors, um, I know my kid, he, the only classes he technically needs right now to graduate are PE and Language Arts. Everything else is not a graduation requirement and everything else is actually classes that he wants to be taking and classes that he maybe needs to be college or career ready and they're not necessarily, um, classes that can be really done remotely. So maybe it's a lab-based class or like the Project Lead the Way Engineering, that's a lot of hands-on things or requires very expensive software or the software that takes up a lot of space on more than what a Chromebook's gonna handle. I think about auto mechanics or welding or some art classes that, um, maybe are like pottery or something. What do we, I guess my question is, what do we do for those kids? Um, would there be potential for some electives in small groups to be done in person? Like what if you're in AP Bio and it's a lab-based class and you can't do it all? Like, those are the things I think about.
So we, um, would have to explore that option about in person, but, um, the work that's been done so far is really to explore virtual experiences. So trying to find labs that align to, um, labs that we're currently doing, but in a virtual setting, um, watching demonstrations with the flexibility of the teacher being able to be in the building, you know, going live through Google Hangouts, the students could watch as a teacher demonstrates, just like they could in person, um, and then recreate some of those skills themselves virtually. Um, as Kyle mentioned earlier, the tech department has already started, um, we've submitted specific classes with software concerns and needs that we are looking into, um, some of our graphic design classes, our Project Lead the Way classes, so the... design classes, our Project Lead the Way classes. So the is that's work that we're in process of how do we meet those needs of both the teachers and the students? So we know that there will be some challenges with some of our classes, but we're trying to get that work going now to if we have to go to this plan at some point, we have some of those answers. But in terms of in-person, we would have to have those those discussions about particular classes.
Okay. Well, I think that one was answered already. It was a similar, but I think you answered when you were talking to Dr. Hildebrand, answered when my question was about therapies and other services required to be in-person. So that's not quite the same thing as the electives. On page thirty-three, you talked about, and this is maybe along the same lines, but we talked about aligning their classes that they would take with their future goals. So I think that kind of is the same type of question that's asked about some of these specifically high school things, like that's why they're taking these classes, because it aligns with their future goals. And you can't really make that up to at a certain point. And I'll have a similar question later when we talk about the current plan updates. So on page thirty-six, sorry, Kyle, this is a technology question. You mentioned that current inventory levels are backordered until September or October. Does that mean the the order? I know you said we already placed an order for, I think it was twenty-one-hundred or twenty-two-hundred devices. Those are on backorder?
Correct.
So really, if we want to start the school year remotely, we don't have devices to do that with if we wanted to give more devices to students?
Right. We we have a number of devices in the district that we're right now reallocating as necessary. But yes, you are correct in your thoughts that any new orders right now are not going to arrive until that timeframe, plus set up an organization and distribution.
Which I think that's something worth commenting to. Like, just because you get the computers in doesn't mean they're ready to hand out day one. That's going to be a significant amount of work for you and your team to get all of the things loaded onto there. And that's.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're also, you know, understanding that we have a lot of devices at school, that if we were in remote learning for all, we could deploy out to our students to support them. The number of devices needed to do remote choice and in-person is actually more per chance because we need a set at school to use while we're in instruction and we need at home to be able to access instructions. So yes, we really need those devices, but I don't want to give the impression to the board that we couldn't go to remote learning for all because of a lack of devices. It certainly would be wonderful to have all matching Chromebooks to give directions and to be able to manage and to be able to push information from the district too. But we have done remote learning before and pushed out many, many, many Chromebooks. If we were in remote learning for all, we would even have more access to devices because we wouldn't need them at school to do this.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that. That makes sense. On page thirty-eight, we mentioned that private placement facilities are open. Do these programs run year-round? Or just we think they're planning to be open when in when the school year starts?
That's correct.
Got it.
We think they're planning to be open.
Okay. Because I would love for them to tell us how that's working out. Okay. I think that was all I have for the moment.
I just wanted, real quick, I just want to point out that, and tell, correct me if I'm wrong, the this fully, the 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 remote for all, if we started out, if we started it out that way, is the is the only is the only plan right now that offers the two-block ELA as we're we've been used to it? Is that correct? Because.
At the junior high level, you are correct.
At the junior high level, right. Okay. So that's, yeah, so that's just interesting to think about. Okay.
And that was, if I remember right, because a lot of the reading work and writing work that they're currently doing in class, they could theoretically do remote? Is that part of that?
Correct. Much of our English language arts at the junior high level, there's independent reading time and writing time. And in order to truncate the schedule, we push that to being done at home instead of during class.
And I, that is totally logical. It's definitely something that I have heard as a concern for our ELA teachers at the junior high, that 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 reduction in time, even though we're hoping that it's not a reduction because they'll be able to do some independent work, but we know that might not be the case for for everybody. So that certainly has been something that's been shared.
Sure.
So it is nine thirty-seven. We we have another presentation. And I I think we all knew that this would be a longer night than most with the amount of information to share. But I think it's safe to say there's a remote learning plan for if we are required to go into remote learning.
Or if we choose to start out with.
Or if we choose to or are required to start out with remote learning. And that's another, you know, part of the discussion. But I think that at this point, let's go through clarification on the plan that we saw last week. That is what our current plan is, which is a choice. So there'll be students that can choose to go into remote learning or there is some sort of in-person component. I'm just giving everyone time to sit down at the new table.
And to get to the next.
And to get to the the next presentation on the computers. So again, I think that this is an area we've seen a lot of, a lot of the same questions and all around safety and all around quality of instruction and around hand sanitizer and face masks and cleaning supplies, none of which are are really insignificant issues when you start talking about a half a million dollars of cleaning wipes.
Maybe those Shane's kits can now, like, be modified to be less glue and more hand sanitizer.
Right.
They they took the the hand sanitizer, right, and the wipes out of the the kits for this year because they couldn't.
Because they couldn't get any.
They couldn't get it any, right.
And we're able to get those?
We are able to get hand sanitizer, wipes. You're looking at the same, it's like a Chromebook. You you won't be able to get that until.
Do we have enough currently on hand to begin this school year?
Wipes, no. We would have to do an alternative, which is we have spray bottles with sanitizer chemical in it that with rags.
Like they use at the grocery store to.
Correct, correct, yes. And we've also purchased electrostatic sprayers that go around and spray a lot quicker, but there is a drying time to those sprayers, to to spraying like tables and things like that.
I'm going to start with the concern that we don't have everything we think we need.
I think Rick told me the other night that he had talked to somebody who works for Clorox and that they think they will be back to inventory by the beginning of September.
Wipes?
Yes.
So we, I mean, Rob's team is online all the time looking for.
Okay, but do we have an actual cleaning plan that is adequate and
Yes.
good enough to to do what we needed to do on day one?
Here comes Rob.
If I can interrupt.
Yes, please. Oh, sorry, Rob.
The answer to that is, in lieu of wipes, we'll use the spray sanitizer and a and a microfiber rag.
Okay, so it's not that we don't have anything to clean with, it's that we don't have that type.
Correct.
Correct.
That doesn't mean that we won't be able to get them some down somewhere down the road, but we'll be able to provide some sort of in-classroom sanitization or or disinfection sort of methodology. It just won't be wipes right out of the gate.
Correct.
Hospitals don't use Clorox wipes. Correct?
Did you find them at Costco?
Hospitals.
Oh, hospitals. No, hospitals don't use Clorox.
Looked at Costco, though, yes.
I'm seeing a lot of people saying, let's get to the plan. Let's get to the plan. Okay, let's let's do this. It's nine forty-one.
All right. Mrs. Doyle, as you said, the second presentation for this evening is to provide the board with a more detailed information in regards to our presentation from last Monday to clarify the learning options, to answer questions the board has in regards to our current in-person and remote option choices for fall of 2020. Second slide. So as you know, in last week's presentation, we laid out two options, one of one for in-person instruction and the second was for remote learning. And we've asked our parents to let us know what choice they would they would be going with. Since we scheduled this informational meeting this tonight, we did send out information earlier today informing parents that the deadline for making a choice would be extended to the end of the week, July twenty-fourth at four o'clock. Next slide. We wanted to provide the board with some up-to-date current information on how many individuals have made their selection and what that looks like at this point in time. So as you can see, we have six thousand forty-eight completed surveys, which is a little over one-third of our students. Of those, seventy percent have selected in-person and thirty percent have selected learning by choice. And at eleven-thirty today, we had five hundred and fifty-eight surveys at that time period of the day that were in process.
Wait, I'm sorry. So this the survey was, when was this?
What survey is this in reference to?
I didn't get a survey.
I did not get a survey.
It's 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 the selection choices that people are making?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Oh, so this is going on to Tyler and picking what thing you want.
Yeah, this is the one that we haven't yet had a chance to do for our own kids.
I did it this morning. I did it.
Very, very good.
I have not yet.
And you're one of the six thousand forty-eight?
I'm sorry, I used the word wrong term.
That's okay. I just thought maybe I was losing my mind, which is possible.
We also said at the last meeting that if they were going to choose in-person learning, they did not have to complete that.
Correct.
So some of this could just be all these people chose in learn or in-person learning and so therefore they don't need to complete it.
So the first bullet point is what percent of all of our students have already selected remote learning by choice? That's the eleven percent.
I will also just quickly add that it was very confusing for me to figure out how to do this. So if you could maybe provide some instructions for how to do it, maybe it seems intuitive, but it was not for me.
There is a full instruction sheet on the reopening plan and linked in the parent document as well. So it'll take you with screenshots through how to do it on Tyler. So if anyone's having any trouble, visit the reopening page and right underneath the full plan, there is a detailed instruction sheet there.
Excellent. Thank you. I I had to follow the sheet. Well, I did figure it out on my own, but it took a while, so.
We have to follow the sheet.
I was with you.
Okay, sorry.
So in a few moments, I'm going to have each of the level directors talk about the in-person learning option. But before we get to that, I just wanted to comment on two of the most commonly asked questions. As we're going through the parents and community members that have posed questions, and we're at about thirteen hundred people that have put in questions so far. And as we read through those, one of the common questions is, why are we having all of our students come every day from early childhood through eighth grade? There are some neighboring districts that have chosen the option that we have where everyone is coming in every day. There are certainly neighboring districts that have cut the school in half, like our high school option, and done that. So I just wanted to recap a little bit of why we did that, even though I mentioned it at the last board meeting. We had sent out a survey to all parents as soon as the new standards and guidelines came out of wearing masks and all of that kind of thing. And we're really in a difficult decision because the guidelines there said for anybody that is under age thirteen, you need to do what you can do to get them into school. And then they also said you need to do social distancing. With the number of students that are in the average classroom, those two ideas are in opposition of each other. So we polled the the community and of the almost eight thousand parents indicated they wanted an in-person option, sixty-six percent chose the every day with all students over the option of alternating days. So we built that plan. Then the second ask question that I want to talk about there is, why did you change the plan from Monday to Wednesday? So after Monday night's meeting, there were a lot of conversations with the teachers' union and that there was a lot of concern about the length of the day for our youngest students and how long they would have to wear masks and also about how we would manage lunch. So that brought about the rather sudden change by Wednesday.
All right, early childhood.
Denise Hildebrand, Executive Director for Special Education. So the in-person plan for early childhood will basically be the same as what's been done done in previous years, where our students will be attending five days per week. There will be an AM and a PM session, each of which is two hours and fifteen minutes long. The Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program is going to mirror what the length of time is for elementary students, so they will be there for four hours. This is the program at Prairie Point Elementary. In order to ensure that we can minimize cross-contamination, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to use the sand and water tables in early childhood. We're certainly going to make sure that students use their own art and writing materials and any materials that are shared, such as any toys or blocks, are going to be sanitized between use. Our circle time is going to be held with smaller groups in assigned spaces to, again, to kind of reinforce the social distancing as best we can and to ensure that our students are as safe as possible. Our gross motor classes will be held outdoors if weather permits. And if it happens to be indoors, then of course, we're going to ensure that those groups are small. While it says here that we're not going to have more than fifty individuals per session, we we realize those are guidelines, but our gross motor activity groups are going to be much smaller than that.
Lindsay Allen, Director of Elementary Education. For in-person learning at the elementary level, students will come to school five days a week for face-to-face instruction from eight-ten to twelve-ten. Teachers will focus on reading, writing, and math during this time. For the subjects of science, art, music, physical education, and library, video instruction and assignments will be be completed at home by students. Lunch will not be eaten during the school day, but there will be grab-and-go lunches available for those students who would like to purchase one. Students will then have lunch at home when they return from school. For families that do need help with childcare due to the shortened school hours, the Oswego Land Park District's Kids Connection will be operated in each elementary school if parents want to sign their student up for this program.
Shannon Lutter, Director of Junior High Education. So for face-to-face instruction for junior high, it would be five days a week from nine AM to one PM. Students would then have activities and assignments that would they would be completing remotely in the afternoon once they got home. Students would have six classes over a two-day period, so they would have three classes per day, and they are about seventy minutes long. They would have in those six periods, one period of English Language Arts, one of math, one of science, one of social studies, and then again, the two elective slots, which could be the intervention classes, study hall, or electives. Physical education and/or health would be done remotely, and that would be they would be assigned to junior high teacher. And then lunch is at the end of the day and it is grab-and-go to eat after they get home.
The in-person plan for high school follows our typical bell schedule, but due to the size of our student population, we have elected to split our high schools in half. On the SD three oh eight reopening website, there is a draft calendar, so our families can see not only the alpha split per high school, because there is a slight difference, but also what days would be in-person for which group and what days would be off-site. So when they're off-site, the students would be participating in activities while home.
One of the frequent questions is what will band inquire like? And we are getting a lot of different research and opinions in on that. So it took some doing, but we have all thirty-three of the band inquire directors and administrative team members coming together on July twenty-third. Some of the reason in the delay is coordinating all of the calendars to make that happen. So they would still have that class during in-person learning, but at this point, we cannot yet say what it will look like. We want to get in our experts with the band inquire directors and talk with them, and then we'll be publishing what that would look like.
Teresa Camidis, I am the Director of Communication.
Teresa Camidis, I am the Director of Communications. I'm speaking to you on the health and safety things, coming at you with a little bit of a public health background. I'm going to first discuss face coverings. So per the guidance that was issued to us from the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Illinois State Board of Education, all individuals in any school building would be required to wear a face covering that covers both the nose and mouth at all times while they're in that building and if they're on a bus. This mandate does not relax, even if social distancing can be maintained. So again, it's every person in every building at all times. However, if they're outdoors and you can social distance that six feet or further, masks do not have to be worn outdoors. So as we discussed, some of the PE or gross motor activities, they're outdoors, those students would have an opportunity to take that mask off as long as that social distancing was maintained. There will also be opportunities, much like you would see any of us adults as we sit in this meeting environment, if a student needs to take a drink, or if they have that grab-and-go breakfast at the beginning of the day, if there's an appropriate time or place, they would be allowed that break to eat or drink things. Each student in our district will be provided with a cloth face mask. However, students can choose to wear a different cloth face covering or other... It doesn't have to be a mask. It could be another form of a face covering, as long as that complies both with the state mandates, which include covering the nose and mouth and fitting snugly along the side of the face, and also has to comply with our existing district policies and rules for student dress. Clear face shields, though they were initially included in the joint guidance that was issued by the state, they retracted some of that guidance and stepped back from that. That's no longer seen as an equal substitution for a cloth face covering in the schools. It doesn't mean that face shields won't be used in any setting. There could be an appropriate time for either an instructor or a student with an alternative medical exemption, where you may see those being used in schools, but it is not considered an equal substitution for a cloth face covering. In regards to the accommodations and exemptions for students where a face covering is not possible because of a medical concern, or it's contraindicated for that student to utilize a cloth, traditional cloth face covering, the parent or guardian can initiate that medical exemption form. And we have both the procedure as well as the exemption form available on the reopening website on our district website. They would need to complete that request for the exemption and then also print off the medical certification component of that form, and that would have to be signed by a medical provider. Those two pieces of information together would be evaluated by the district to determine whether or not that student would then qualify for the exemption. However, that doesn't mean that a student that qualifies for an exemption is free from any sort of face covering. That's where we would begin to explore the alternatives that are either prescribed by the medical provider, set up within the classroom setting based on what the student can tolerate. So this could be where you would begin to see the face shields in place, or other barriers, or increased social distancing, so that we can continue to try to control the spread of germs within that setting. We will have district-issued silicone bands, much like those little reminder bands that students and staff could either wear or have on a keychain and visible for people. So if other students or staff members do see someone not wearing the appropriate face covering, they would know that there would be an exemption on file. And again, we talked a little bit about this, but there could be exceptions where a face mask might not be worn all the time, but it's not a medical exemption. For example, if we have an instructor for a language or a hard-of-hearing instructor, someone where they need to be able to see the face in order to work with a student, they may have a face shield, or they may have some increased distance, or a combination of other things in place for that period of time. But then again, they would put on that covering as required for everyone in the building when they're not engaged in that activity. So we've talked a little bit about what does the COVID symptom list look like, and it's pretty exhaustive, and probably most of us sitting in this room could qualify under one of these symptoms at any point in time. The current guidelines state that known COVID symptoms, and these are singular, they do not require one or any more than one or a combination of them, is a fever of 100.4 degrees or greater, with or without chills, a cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, fatigue, muscle or body aches, headache, a newly-developed loss of taste or smell, a sore throat, congestion or runny nose, nausea or vomiting, and diarrhea. I want to put in a quick disclaimer here for your board members. The printed version of these next couple slides that you have in front of you are different than what you're going to see up here. We joke that the guidance changes daily, and it actually can change hourly and by minutes. So at a couple minutes after 7:00, I just got off the phone with the health department, and the guidance has changed from what we had submitted just a few hours prior. So I will divert your attention up to the screen, and we will make sure that you're provided a copy of the most recent 7:02 PM guidance. So for student exposure, exclusion, and notification as of this evening, if a student tests positive for a COVID-19 case, the student must stay home for at least 10 days from the symptom onset or that positive result. Additionally, the student cannot return, and this is new guidance, until 24 hours has elapsed from the resolution of the fever without medications. So what this means is if the 10 days has elapsed, however, the student is still experiencing a fever or has 24 hours prior, they would still need to maintain that isolation away from the school environment. If there is a positive student, notification will be made for anyone that's at a close contact of exposure to that known case. The state defines close contact as within six feet of someone for 15 minutes or longer. So as we consider what that looks like in a school environment, it would likely be classmates, students that rode with them on a bus, attended a before-or-after-school program, but not someone they would have just passed in a hallway passing period. In regards to those siblings or others that are sharing living quarters with a positive case, this is also some differing guidance. Those students would need to remain on quarantine for 14 days. The reason for this is because even if a sibling or someone living in the home were to test negative, we can't tell exactly when they were exposed last, and if they haven't had enough time to develop those symptoms, or if it was too early and we're getting a false negative on that test. So if we have a student test positive, once that information is received, that student's siblings, or if they have a parent working in the district, anyone that's sharing a living space with a positive case needs to stay on quarantine for 14 days. Once we receive notification of a positive COVID test result, any area that the student was in, wherever possible, should be closed for 24 hours prior to the disinfection process to begin. So sometimes this won't be possible. If it's a main entrance area, main office area, we may not be able to completely close it for a full 24 hours. However, if it's a classroom space or a smaller location that we can close off prior to that disinfection taking place, those are the guidelines. Each night, we will be doing cleaning and sanitization, as well as cleaning throughout the day in the buildings. However, once we know there's a positive case, we would make sure that as quickly as possible, that effort is focused on the location of where that student was last at. If at least a week has elapsed since the student was last at school, the regular procedures we have in place as far as our rounding and evening disinfecting would be adequate. So this is important because we oftentimes, if a student is sent homesick, there could be a few days before a parent takes them in for testing. There could be a period of time before those results are available. So it may not always be that this full cleaning procedure needs to take place. So for students who have an exposure, or excuse me, a student that has a symptom, so a student exhibits a symptom, that long list that we just talked about, all those 11 things that we talked about, if they exhibit that while they're at school, or if a parent calls in a student sick for school, then this would be the protocol that we follow. If the student is at school at the time that the symptom presents, the student would be sent home from school as quickly as possible. We are working with the schools individually to set up locations within each building where students could be evaluated and kept away from other students as our nursing staff evaluates where that student is at and makes arrangements for that student to be sent home. If a child is sent home for any one of those things on that list, 10 days of isolation must pass, and they must be fever-free for at least 24 hours without medication in order for them to come back, unless they can provide documentation of a negative COVID result, or there's an alternative diagnosis or cause from a physician that will include a release to attend school. So some examples of this would be if a student presented with congestion, they would be sent home for that cause. That student might be taken to their primary care physician, who would then may determine that, based on the symptoms, the past history, other contributing factors, that they're able to determine that the cause of that congestion is, for example, seasonal allergies. That doctor would then need to indicate that alternate diagnosis, as well as indicate that they believe that that student is well and can go back to school. That doesn't remain like a hall pass on file at the nurse's office for any other symptoms that those students would come down with. So if, upon returning to school, that student then develops a headache, though we may, as parents or teachers, assume that that headache has to do with the student suffering from seasonal allergies, if those symptoms are not outlined and that physicians notice that they provided to the school district, that would be a new symptom that would require the student being sent home, and then we would follow the same protocol, either the isolation, the negative test, or the physician note to return to school. As you can imagine, this would be a large number of students any given day in our school that this could impact. We will not be any official notification surrounding this. So what that means is if someone in your student's class was sent home for a runny nose or nausea or any of those symptoms on that list, we wouldn't automatically then notify everyone that that student was around, because at that point, that student is not a positive case, and we can't assume what the cause of those symptoms would be. For their siblings, again, follows in that same bracket. We can't assume that that student has COVID and thus pass along those isolation requirements to their siblings or housemates, unless there's that positive case, in which case they would do the 14-day quarantine. What we can say, though, is that parents of a child who is sent homesick may opt in to a voluntary isolation for the other children in their household. So while they're waiting to go to the doctor or waiting for a test result, that's an option for them to isolate, and those would be an excused absence from the in-person environment. When we have a student that has a symptom exhibited while in the building, the cleaning procedures start with soap and water in that area, and then would move on to the CDC disinfecting, wipe, spray, towels, whatever that would look like, for where the student was just at, and any materials that that student might have left behind. We would then deep clean the space each evening, as we talked about. That would be protocol for every building. The only caveat here is if there's a bodily fluid such as vomit expelled in that room, we would then close off that room, follow the normal procedures with the PPE and the proper cleaning of that space while the students and staff are removed from that area. We would wait 24 hours if at all possible prior to the full disinfection of that room before it's utilized again as a classroom space. So we're going to just cover a couple of other pieces of information. So in this new environment, we will always err on the side of sending a student home if they present with a symptom. So if a student comes down to the nurse's office, if they present to their teacher, you know, with a headache or a minor stomach ache, or in the past, we may have waited some time out or tried an alternative distraction, these students will be going home because it would be the place of the medical professional to determine whether or not that student is safe to be at school and could potentially be dangerous in the presence of other students and staff. Also, when a student is called in sick, additional information would be collected because based on the reason why the student was called in, they may then be included in that isolation requirement. And we also want to know that so that we can continue to gather the data on each of our buildings on each day to know how many students we have, how many staff we have, what the existing symptoms are. Our nursing staff would make a phone call to the health department for any guidance at any point along the way. However, we will always notify them of any report of a positive COVID case, and that's reciprocal. If they are aware of a case of a student, they would work with our health services team in order to put in place any requirements as far as isolation, cleaning, et cetera, might go. We're unique in that we sit in several counties. So Kendall County has been our primary source of information, and they would always be involved from a tracing perspective since a large amount of our building staff and residents fall within this county. However, if a student or staff member lives in a different county, then that other county also needs to be notified and be involved in all of that tracing and investigation of that case. We can't stress enough the importance, while we have all of these things in place, the importance of the primary sources of reduction of the spread of germs, which is the face covering being on at all times while in the school building, the use of frequent hand washing, sanitizer, and really important, the social distancing as much as possible. We had a question earlier about what's the threshold? When do we close a school? Who closes a school? Who closes a district? Who closes a region? There's not a prescribed number, so there's not a threshold that we would hit at any point in time where you can say, we have four cases in a building, so we close. However, an outbreak, the definition of an outbreak is only two cases that are not from the same household. That illustrates transmission. So in those cases, what will happen is the health department is the one investigating this. They'll be working with the state health department to determine if there's an outbreak, a need to further isolate sections of students, sections of a town, a region, all the way up to the entire state. So these kind of decisions involve a number of state authorities, including DCFS, IDPH, ISB, and then local health authorities. That's not something that would be decided at the district level solely at any point. If it's a medical reason that we're closing a building, that would be in consultation with our local, regional, state health authorities. Again, I want to stress at this point that this information is ever-changing, so it's not time to print it off and hang it on the fridge just yet. We expect that we will have additional changes as weeks go by, as days go by. The plan with this will be that we are developing flow charts, protocols, all of that that'll be in place to train our own staff, to train our building leadership, to train parents, to train students, to understand and be able to recognize what these new exclusionary measures may look like, and to understand that even though we might do all of that and start one way, that guidance could again change at any moment in time. So this is very much a fluid situation. So this is very much a fluid situation. So we've asked a lot about what, what's the daily screening look like for the students? How do we ensure that the students that are, students and staff that are coming in our building each day are free from symptoms and free from a fever? This is also based on guidance, kind of an evolving situation for us as a district. But we can tell you that our plan is kind of, kind of be multi-tiered, and will involve a lot of parents, students reporting, as well as staff being visually aware of what's going on. So at the start of each year, we, start of this year, hopefully not each year, the start of this year, parents and guardians will be notified of what those current reporting and quarantine requirements are for in-person learning. And part of that requires that there's a daily certification of wellness for the student, checking both the presence of symptoms, as well as a temperature above 100.4. So in order to accomplish that, the state allows that to be done within the school environment as students arrive each day, or as an alternative, it can be a self-certification that's done at home prior to the student arriving at school in the morning. For us, where it's a little bit gray, what we're trying to develop is, we want to make sure that all parents understand that requirement at the start of the school year, understand that responsibility lies in the hands of the parents to ensure that a sick child is not being brought into the school environment. We'll add that next layer on of the school, having the, you know, eyes and ears around wellness for the students that are there, from the parents we haven't heard from, instituting some form of check of symptoms and temperature. It's a little easier in the older kiddos than it is in our younger ones, but we have to make sure on a daily basis, both for the health and wellness of our own students that are in our building, but also the liability of those other students that are in our building and the exposure that would happen with a sick child being present in the building. So this plan is kind of emerging. We expect, again, that there will be a component for parents with this self-certification process, coupled with some version of in-school checks, reiteration of what symptoms might look like, staff training on what to recognize for students. There is one benefit in that the guidance does explicitly say that these types of high-level symptom screenings and temperature checks do not have to be done by a medical personnel. This is another opportunity for us, looking at alternate positions within a building setting. We may have a team in each building that have been trained on the use of the touchless thermometer, and kind of the quick list of questions to assess the current student symptoms. That's me, and now it's you, Val.
Hi, I'm Valerie Patterson, Executive Director of Student Services, and I'm going to just briefly touch on an example of behavior expectations for students under this, this new type of situation that we've been exposed to with COVID. So students must follow all rights and responsibilities student handbook guidelines, regardless of the learning environment. So we've said this several times tonight, that whether you're in person, remote, remote for all, these guidelines still are in place. So when parents make that selection about a learning environment, they are agreeing to the district requirements for that selection. So the only way that a parent guardian would be able to say, "Well, my child's not going to wear a face covering," is if they go through the steps that Teresa described to obtain that exception that then prescribes that student's ability to not wear a face covering, or have an alternate face covering as an approved medical exemption. Now that said, if we have a student or a parent guardian refusal to comply with expectations that would be around student safety, with that personal protective equipment, and the social distancing, and all of those pieces, one of the things we have seen parents ask over and over and over again is, "What are you going to do if so-and-so is not complying?" So related to the COVID-19 situation, we would still address that behavior or that refusal per our rights and responsibilities student handbook guidelines, and building administration would do what they would normally do. So an example might be, we've got a refusal to comply, so under Section 8, in Part B, there's a gross misconduct disobedience section, and under Item 8, it says insubordination and disobeying rules. That said, this next guidance is the piece that's really important. That administrative response needs to include a review of the report and the incident, including the age of the student, the stage of development, is there an IEP in place that presents some challenges maybe to this? Again, checking to make sure there's no medical exemption. The student would be given due process, again, depending on age and stage. Obviously, at the early childhood level, there's a different response than at the high school level. So those are all done on a case-by-case basis, administrators know this, they're trained, they understand that their response to behavior has to be per Senate Bill 100. That means it's case-by-case, and you put a context to student behavior in an environment, and then you include not just an appropriate disciplinary consequence, but also what's the intervention, what's the support, what's the other piece that goes with making sure that this behavior, which is problematic, does not continue. So in some cases, it might be a disciplinary event, because a student is making a statement of, "I'm not going to, and you can't make me." That's a different conversation than the student maybe who's experiencing some difficulty with the mask, or the face covering, and really does, there needs to be some further investigation. And I want to remind you that not all students will come into school knowing what those issues are, they may be experiencing them as we start in that in-person environment. There may be families where they've got those younger children that haven't been wearing masks for six hours at a time, or however, and it is going to be a little bit of a learning curve. So we wouldn't start out with heavy discipline, we would start off with case-by-case response to student behavior involving the parents, and then evolving what we need to do to make sure that everyone is safe, and the right interventions and supports, if that resolves the situation, that we bring those to the table first, before we just lead with discipline.
So far for this presentation, we've been talking about in-person option. I want to switch gears and talk about remote learning by choice. And I really need to make sure that we define and talk about what I mean by remote by choice versus remote for all. So remote by choice is for those parents that choose that option, even if the rest of the school or the district is in person. That's the remote by choice, that's what we're asking parents to do right now if they want that option. Very different from the second term on their remote for all, which is what the first presentation was all about, that would be for the students that had been in-person instruction, but can no longer because the school or the district is shut down. So we've got remote by choice and remote for all. Just a reminder that this is very different from the remote learning that had happened in the spring. The average student will have around five hours of combined learning activities and instruction, there will be grades and assessments that would happen just like it would in the typical school year. Attendance will be taken on a daily basis, and they must respond online, and then we will be following up and taking action with those students that are not in attendance. Now we're going to have each of the level directors just give a very brief overview, but more details than perhaps our community has had in the past, about remote learning by choice.
Denise Hildebrand. So for the early childhood, the remote learning by choice schedule will mirror what occurs for the onsite learning, and also it's very similar to the remote for all schedule. There will be daily live social-emotional learning sessions that will be for about 10 to 15 minutes every morning. There'll also be the large and small group sessions, about 15 minutes in duration for each, and as I had mentioned previously, they will be provided by both the teacher and the teaching assistant, in order for the teaching assistants at that time to also continue to practice previously learned skills with small groups of students. There will be pre-recorded...